Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, July 21, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kurzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster, Asbury Park Press, by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on municipal building board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action can be taken in the following matters before this board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in this loop to the bar. Clarity, ladies and gentlemen.
I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is absent. Mayor Moore.
Here.
Jen Sauter is absent. Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Bob Zuckerman.
Here.
Kathy McLaughlin.
Here.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
And Chairwoman Kurzak.
Here. Okay, the first item up is the resolution for approval for 607-611 Sewell Avenue. Has the resolution been modified?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Okay, so that's been taken out.
Eligible members are Barbara Kurzak, John Moore, Michael Goonan, Yvonne Clayton, Jennifer Sauter, Kathy McLaughlin, and Bob Zuckerman.
Are you motion to approve?
I moved.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Kathy McLaughlin. Bob Zuckerman.
Yes.
Michael Goonan.
Yes.
Chairwoman Kurzak.
Yes. All right, we have the application, 1201 Memorial Drive.
Chairwoman, I've reviewed the notices for tonight's meeting through proper form.
Excellent.
Another matter of housekeeping is that here are, I believe, two members, Bob and Dan, who are not at the last meeting, but they have watched the audio video and all that sort of thing. Please make, please put that on the record that you have.
I have, I did indeed watch the video from the first meeting.
I did as well. Okay, and I will circulate a certification for you to sign after tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Jack, excuse me. The last meeting I missed, but I looked at the AP-TV, the broadcast of it. This application was carried at that meeting.
Yes. So you didn't have to, there's nothing to do with it?
Nothing to, nothing to watch.
No, but you were at the April meeting.
Yes.
Yes, okay, you're fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Steve Goen from Giordano Halloran and Cecil representing the applicant, Jamal's Baverman Building LLC. As Mr. Cerberico noted, this is a continuation of a meeting that we had in April. I know at the meeting in April, we sort of introduced the project and went over some design, architectural design. We're going to finish up architecture tonight with Dan Zanetto, but first I'm going to have Jim Kennedy show you the site plan and we'll walk through some of the engineering items. We did get review letters, one from Clark Haden Hintz, dated July 14, 2025, and one from Mr. Avakian's office, dated July 9, 2025. I think we can comply with all of the recommendations in those letters, but we're going to address them as we go through Mr. Kennedy's testimony and Mr. Zanetto's testimony. If we could put up the rendered site plan, that would be good. I don't know if we marked any exhibits at the April meeting.
Who is bringing up the site plan if you, if you're not?
No, Jim is, Jim is going to talk.
Oh, he's going to do it?
Yes, correct.
I don't see a laptop.
I think, um.
Do you need me to do it?
Yeah, could you put it up?
Okay.
I think there was A1, architectural.
In the future, the norm is the presenter.
We can do it.
Runs a laptop.
Sure.
That's, that's the norm. Now, if that's something that you're not prepared to do, please tell me, and then we could have someone else do it, but in the normal circumstances, our secretary has other things to do during a meeting?
Yeah, A1 was David's plans?
The architectural plans?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to have Jim do it. Just give them a sec.
Okay.
All right, so when we get it up there, we'll mark it as A2, the rendered site plan.
So we're first looking at engineering?
Yes, correct.
While we're waiting, I'll swear in our staff.
Please do.
Please raise your hand if you're swearing affirm. Testimony about giving this mark with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names and your affiliation with the board.
Don Miller, board planner.
Same law, same board, thank you.
So I suppose before Jim gets going, we should swear him in as well.
Sure.
Yes, I do. James Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y, 211 Maple Avenue in Red Bank, New Jersey.
Jim, before you get started, just give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications, please.
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've previously been qualified before this board, as well as many others in Monmouth County over the last 30 years. I'm also an expert, testified in Superior Court, as an expert in civil engineering, and I've been qualified as such throughout my career.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I don't see this in my pocket, so where did this come from? I don't see it in anything that we have here.
Right, so Jim, why don't you describe what we're looking at on the, on the board?
Sure, this is the site plan rendering that's dated tonight. It's basically a colorized version of what you have in your packet. What was submitted, that's the landscape plan, was merely black and white. This provides some color to make it a little easier for me to describe and superimposes some zoning as well.
Okay, what page are we on? On the one that we have?
That would be the landscape plan, so I believe that's sheet four.
It'll be four of nine?
That's correct.
Five of, five of nine is lighting, four of nine?
Mm-hmm, five.
Five?
Five.
Okay.
That's the landscape plan, although site plan might be more useful, whatever's best for.
We're able to mark this, A2?
Well, this is a color version. It's been slightly tweaked for this exhibit, but the base is your landscape.
Is five of nine?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, um. So looking at exhibit A2, and I'm going to hand everybody a copy of A2, too, so you have a copy in front of you, but why don't you describe what we have going on from a proposed conditions perspective?
Okay, as you know, this site is subject to a redevelopment zone. It's a one and a half, a little over one and a half acre piece of property. To the right of the exhibit is north, and that would be Fifth. To the south and left of the exhibit is Fourth, and across the bottom is Memorial Drive. What you see in yellow is the building footprint that the architect previously testified to, but will testify again tonight. The colorized, the red circles, that's proposed landscaping, and I'll kind of step through what's proposed using A2. The, I meant to the west, or the top of the exhibit, are single-family residential homes. There are 126 residential units proposed, and approximately a little under 2,000 square feet of retail proposed. So the orange square in the middle, just with the mouse there, that is the building that the architect will be discussing. I'll be talking about the site improvements that are proposed. Now, I guess the largest feature that you see in light gray up to the top or west of the exhibit, this is a portion of the parking lot that is exterior to the building. So there's 22 parking stalls located at the top. It's a lighter beige color. The remainder of the parking field is underneath the building footprint. So 22 spaces are located to the exterior. About 109 spaces are proposed, both covered and partially covered, within and underneath the building. A single means of access off of Fourth Avenue is proposed. Its location is about halfway up the frontage of Fourth. And just a couple notes on the parking area, and you can see it on A2. We propose barrier-free parking stalls. There's a grouping closest to the barrier-free entrance and elevator access to the residential floors and to the commercial. So they're located at the northeast quadrant of the parking garage. Then you'll see, and I, I know that it's not easy to see, but where the hand is, which is right across the bottom or Memorial Drive side, we have not only the EV parking stalls, but also the make-ready EV stalls. So this is just demonstrating compliance with the ordinance, the redevelopment ordinance, that we, we're not taking extra credit for these EV stalls or the make-ready stalls, but we are complying with the ordinance to provide both barrier-free parking stalls as well as these EV and make-ready stalls.
Excuse me, so if you get to the exterior parking lot and they come in, they have to go all the way around?
That's correct. They'd come forward and go counterclockwise and then up to the, to the west. Most people, I would bet, will want to park under the building in the parking field, and I see this exterior parking lot as more of an overflow area. I didn't have a problem with the circuitous, you know, parking, because that allows someone to actually visualize the entire parking field under the garage before moving outside. It also helps with traffic circulation not to have that immediate left turn as you come into the garage, only because of site visibility across the trash room. If we're going to provide and break up that, and we do have extra stalls, and we could, but I think this is a better design alternative, because it, it just makes people go a little bit slower through the parking garage and not try and conflict with an immediate left turn or with someone coming the other way to make a right turn that's kind of blind because of where the trash room is. So I don't have, you know, an issue with that, that turning. Every aisle, every stall, the aisles are 23 feet wide, they're all one-way aisles. All the parking stalls comply at nine by 18.
I'm sorry, you said they're one-way?
No, no, two-way. Two-way, two-way, 23-foot wide aisles, all nine by 18 parking stalls. We're not trying to cram anything in here. 121 parking stalls are required, and we're providing an excess of, well, 131 stalls are proposed in the design. Okay, so parking and then, you know, just simply utilities.
Jim, before you jump on parking, I just wanted to point out, I do agree with Jim about churning in, that's not great, but when you go to that back open-air area and you pull in, I want to say that, is there any parking back there? How do you discern when someone's pulling back out?
So we did provide for a small turnaround, bump out, yes. So it is a 23-foot wide aisle. So a K-turn, okay, it might not be a three-point turn, but a car can typically turn in a 23-foot aisle, especially providing that, you know, that.
And just, just to be clear, just so where the board knows where I'm coming from, I do agree it's possible to do it, but I think 23 feet, and like Jim just testified to, you're going to be more of the three-point turn, pulling in and turning out. However, it would be up to the board if they prefer more parking or if you lost a space or two to reconfigure some of that to have a more efficient way of backing out if you get stuck back there.
Are they going to be assigned spaces?
Not to my, typically not. When we assign them, it uses, it loses efficiency. I prefer them to be unassigned unless there's some security reason to assign them. I know of no security reason to assign them, so my.
No, I ask only because if you have your own space, then if you run to your space, it should be free.
You're right, I agree with you.
Well, if you don't assign them, then how do you, how do you manage the number of residents who are using the spaces? Because typically you have one resident who gets space and one has to park somewhere else. Then otherwise, you just have first number to serve with the hat, with the stop. Me even had to throw my own personal vehicles down there.
So, I mean, there will be a management company that is required to patrol the parking, whether that be through, I don't know, a decal or a hang tag. I mean, we certainly can't have people just parking, you know. Unfortunately, this is, you know, it's reserved, we meet the parking standard.
Yeah.
But it is reserved for, for resident use.
So is it going to be one commit per unit?
That, I would think that that's exactly how it would work, because that's the standard. One parking space per unit is the standard.
So can someone, at some point, after you're finished, after you're finished, we can't intermix, when you're finished, then we can have someone else that will tell us what it is as opposed to what we think it is.
Okay.
So I would rather have someone that will tell us what it is.
Agreed. Yeah, we can have, Mr. Willstein is here, so he can answer those questions after Jim's done.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so with regard to utilities, this building does have access to public utilities, of course. Water is located at the northeast corner, along the corner of Moore and Fifth. Sewer is located at the southeast corner, at the corner of Fourth. We have electric at the southwest corner, which is in this area, the top left-hand side of A2. The transformer is located in this green box right here. So in locating that, we had to weigh a couple things. First, JCPN L requires vehicular access to the transformer. Vehicular access is actually provided from the parking area. Secondly, we had to screen it from Fourth Avenue. I don't, I don't want the transformer on Fourth Avenue, because A, we don't have vehicular access that JCPN L needs, there's required bollards and clear space around it. It would create an island in an area that we are basically trying to landscape, tightly landscape. And we're putting this behind a fence where the visual intrusion to the neighborhood is lessened. Now, if JCPN L tells us we have to move it out, then we're going to trade landscape. We're going to move landscaping into the island, we're going to keep the island landscaped and move the transformer out. They do have, under their APU agreement, they are solely responsible for locating the equipment. The developer can appeal to them and pay a little extra for the extra length of primary cabling, but under the BPU tariff that New Jersey is negotiating with JCPN L, they, and they alone, can decide whenever they want to decide where the transformer has to be placed. But I've been doing this a long time. We meet their criteria with clearance, with vehicular access, and we're trying to meet the city's requirements for screening and landscaping. So I think this fits the puzzle. I think this works. I think it's really the best alternative, given the, given the constraints, and I think it'll work. I think it'll work well. So, and then lastly, stormwater management. So what we've provided is four drainage swells, starting in the northwest corner. You see this, kind of this decorative stone channel with a landscape swell, and then at the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast corner, a smaller swell, going over to the southwest corner, I'm sorry, southeast corner, another swell, and then finally, a larger or the largest swell at the southwest corner of the property. The intent of the swells, in accordance with the redevelopment ordinance, is to disconnect impervious surfaces from the municipal drainage system. In years past, what we've done is taken the roof leaders, taken the drainage inlets, and just stuck them into a pipe. That's how most cities manage drainage. In your redevelopment ordinance, you've suggested, and I agree, that you disconnect impervious surfaces from direct connection into the municipal system. So what that means is that our water, all of it, is going to come off of our parking lot, run through a specially designed swell, landscape swell, and then get collected into an inlet. That inlet then connects into the municipal system. So you might say, and it matters, okay, it matters. Anytime that we can impose vegetation within the flow of stormwater, you're going to get non-source point, well, water quality benefits from non-source point pollution. So as, let's say, de-icer is used on the exterior portion of the property, that de-icer will get washed into the landscaping and instead of the drainage system, and ultimately, Deale Lake. So anytime that we can interrupt that direct passage, that's really the standard of practice, and that's what we're doing in this instance. We are reducing runoff, as shown in our stormwater management report. This was previously developed, as you know, the Baverman Building. We're reducing the impervious surfaces related to vehicular traffic by about four, vehicular parking spaces by about 4,900 square feet. In addition, we are, like, well, I already testified to it, but imposing the swells for some water quality benefit. Because this is all going towards that north Asbury connection to Deale Lake, that watershed is about 250, 260 acres that flows to one specific portion of Deale Lake. As you know, Deale Lake has a huge watershed, 5,900 acres flows into Deale Lake. But the portion that this site is in is about 250 acres. So we do have a slight increase in stormwater volume, and we're talking about 2,000 cubic feet. It's not a lot of water considering a 250 or so watershed. So in my report, we show reductions in peak flow, but nominal or de minimis increases in volume. Given the constraints of the site, and what I mean by that, we have a high water tank. The only way to mitigate stormwater volume would be to infiltrate it, but because groundwater was found about three feet below grade, our ability to mitigate stormwater volume through infiltration is limited. We can't, we really can't do it. That's not to say that the landscape swells will not intercept water. They will infiltrate to the extent they can, and of course, there'll be water used by the plants and vegetation to, to reduce volume, but our calculations don't reflect that. Our calculations show kind of a worst-case scenario of that 2,000 or so cubic foot increase in volume. But we do reduce peak flows as a result of this non-structural approach, which is really reducing impervious surface on the site. And, and so.
Are those the gray, are those the gray areas within the landscape areas?
Yes, the gray areas are just the inverts of those swells. That's just the decorative river stone that's hatched, there's.
So, 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 so.
No, 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 it's kind of a decorative stone with landscaping.
And Jim, before you go, I'm just going to jump in. I really do think Jim did a good job explaining that. One of the things that we asked for in my letter, in our letter, was if there was any other way to keep some of that quantity on the site, and why I say that, and being three feet, you're season-high water, there's really not. But the reason I say that is because DEP and our regulations, our ordinance says to demonstrate through hydraulic analysis and what his team had done, that their volume/quantity is de minimis. So peak runoff, which is pretty much your intensity of how fast something is going into the lake, that's your peak runoff, that was reduced, but your quantity, the amount, the volume, the peak volume, was increased by 2,000 cubic feet per second.
Cubic feet overall, not per second.
Cubic feet, excuse me, cubic feet overall. So the language in the ordinance doesn't state a fixed volume. So could it be de minimis? It's testimony that it is. I can't really speak on that, but what I can speak on, we all know Deale Lake. When that gate valve is closed, it's not tidal. When the gate valve is open, it allows water to go out. This is a good amount of water going into Deale Lake. It is a 100-year storm. However, I don't know if there's anything else that could be done to the site with this application for stormwater.
So is this the only place, is this our only way that we're dealing with stormwater?
Yeah, so the only way that they're dealing with stormwater is those swells. There's no quantity, and they don't have to, per ordinance, excuse me. However, I did just want to voice the concern or my feeling that, you know, we all see what happens with Deale Lake. This is a big development. It is per ordinance. He did testify that it is de minimis, and that's what the ordinance asked for.
And that, and that's a personal opinion?
That's my.
De minimis is personal.
Well, yeah, exactly. It's, there's no fixed volume per DEP or per the ordinance.
So the ordinance doesn't state that you have to be.
It doesn't, yeah.
Certain amount.
That or equal, it does not.
And just in my rationale in determining de minimis, I have to look at the overall watershed. So when I said 5,900 acres that flowed to Deale Lake, that's an incredible volume of water. We're talking about 2,000 cubic feet. If you think about, you know, it's, it's just such a nominal amount considering the overall watershed.
I think it's, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think that it's close and near and dear to everyone here's heart, being that you see more frequent, really high-intensity storms, and Deale Lake is a known culprit to get inundated with rain. So I do agree with what you're saying, it's just, it's hard to say what to do, because if we can't put, in my, I don't have a design for the applicant, but like, you know, at first I was thinking, what if we did something underneath the parking lot? But we clearly can't if it's three feet. I, I don't know if there's another way.
But we looked at, I, I looked at underdrain. I looked at providing perforated piping under the invert of these swells, but it wouldn't meet any design standard, because we have to have a two-foot separation. So it would just be money spent. We can say we're going to do it, but it doesn't work. So why, why do that? Why spend that money? We looked at, like you said, porous pavement and storage underneath the exterior building for a number of reasons. That didn't work as well, mostly because it's a two-foot separation requirement from the storage bed. So I looked at alternatives. The best alternative here was reducing impervious surface, and that's what we did. We reduced impervious surface from what was there. That's the non-structural approach that your ordinance, you know, emphasizes. Secondly, we provided landscape swells and disconnected the impervious surface of the development from the stormwater management system. So I do think that this is the best result. We have the power to design. I don't know of any other alternatives that would work for the volume that we're talking about.
How deep are these swells?
If this size building, I mean.
Right.
If a smaller building was built, you would have more pervious area.
Correct, yeah.
Or less parking area.
This part of it, if you build, if you build a smaller building, the pervious parking area would be smaller.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. So do the swells slow down any of the discharge or, I'm sorry, runoff more than discharge? Do they detain at all, or is it really just sort of incidental?
So they're not designed to detain, but they will slow runoff by the very nature of the roughness of the stone path and landscape. And like I said, they will have.
I mean, they're not very, it's, it's pretty flat. It's not like the, and it's an inlet at the end, it just goes out.
Correct.
Once it reaches that.
So, so it works kind of like a rain garden works?
Yes.
And how deep is this swell? How deep are they? Meaning, before you get to the rock and, and level surface, how deep are they?
So they vary depending on which, so I think the deepest one is at the north. I'm just flipping over the grading plan, which is on sheet three of nine. The northwest is about a foot deep. The northeast is about, oh, the same, about a foot deep. Moving to the southeast, that's a little deeper, about 18 inches. And then the southwest, 10.75 to 11.9, so a little over a foot, actually, a little more than a foot there as well.
Is that the depth of the block?
No, that's the depth of storage to the block. So from the point where this would overflow to the invert, and these aren't designed to be very deep as a rain garden, because it inundates the vegetation and the plants and the landscaping that we landscape there. So they're not designed to be detention bases, or they're designed to have an impact on, you know, like I said, disconnecting impervious surface from the site to the municipal system. The other alternative would be to just connect everything in, put an inlet in, put an inlet in the street, draw a pipe, and.
Which is what you're allowed to do?
Which is what we're allowed to do. But this, the redevelopment zone, you know, your planner, your engineer, our office, we thought this is a better alternative. It's something that can be done. I think it's a, it's an attractive feature, and it has an environmental benefit as well.
So when we were talking about the transform and the possibility of JCPN L not approving this, will that remove part of the swell?
No, it will not.
So it's not. So it's not that the swell ends before that, that whole area where the transformer may have some modifications?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the swells will remain the same?
Yes, that's correct. And honestly, while we're at this point, I understand from the last meeting that there was some discussion about having a direct access to the bike storage room. And if we were to do that, it would interrupt, that's the swell, it would cut the swell off. So we worked with the architect and he'll discuss that further. But that is really one of the reasons why there wasn't a direct access to the bike room because it goes right through our landscapes.
I was, I was under the impression that that swell was like a walking path.
Oh, I see.
So you can disregard that.
Okay, thank you. So with regard to, well, let's just talk about landscaping while we're there. So landscaping, we're proposing eighty-three trees. We meet the requirements for size, height, spacing, placement. Three-hundred-and-twenty-three shrubs are proposed, not only within the rain gardens, but along the perimeter of the site as well as some of the internal islands. And then nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight ornamental grasses and perennials throughout the site to provide seasonal interest, to provide some color and pollinator garden as well. In the planner's letter, there was a question with regard to, let me just get it exactly right. It was ten percent of the exterior parking area had to have landscaping, and that had to be outside of other areas that were used to meet other requirements. So I'll just work through this. The parking lot is seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet. That's outside of where the building is. So that's this lighter yellow shade. That's seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet, so ten percent of that is seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet. So we have to provide at least seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet of landscaping. We provide a total of three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen, but we have to back out a portion of that because of the required buffer. So we total that to two-thousand-three-hundred-and-five. So the real numbers are three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen minus the ten-foot buffer of fifteen-twelve comes out to twenty-three-oh-five square feet where seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-point-two are required.
I'm sorry. Are you counting landscaping on the site?
Yes.
In that three thousand? Okay.
Yes, the total.
The landscaping has to be in the parking area to count.
It's around the perimeter.
Would you have an exhibit for this?
I do.
Yeah, okay. It's much clearer in the exhibit.
Do you have a, do you have a?
I do.
Jim's gonna pull up electronic, we'll mark this A three-one. Tell everybody what A three is.
So A three is just that parking, the landscape calculation of the area of perimeter landscaping and versus the outside parking area. So this red area is the total landscaping that's provided. And that totals, that totals the three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen square feet. A portion of that is within a required buffer, which is really, you know, that perimeter area. That required buffer is fifteen-twelve. So the remainder, which is this area, which is the fourth street side, running along the left-hand side of A three, that island that is interior, as well as this island, which is interior as well to that parking area, that totals two-thousand-three-hundred-and-five square feet.
I'm sorry, what's in the transformer area?
So there's, that's grass all the way through.
It's grass.
But even if, even if we discounted that block.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure because I think when my tech was measuring, he didn't, he wasn't counting that because it was not.
So the white block is not counted. That's concrete. That's what the transformer says. So I didn't think we need, unless you calculated a different way, I don't think we need that waiver for interior landscaping for the parking lot. It's not interior, it's just landscaping for the parking lot.
What's the boundary for the left area on here? Is it the fence?
That's, that's right. There's a fenced area, and then after that becomes the rain garden or the swell.
The sidewalks are pavers?
Well, I can go back to the site plan. There's no sidewalk shown. There's no pavers.
I can't get to my plan.
So there's like, I see pavers. So is this the sidewalks or does this? If you go back to the, yeah, so at the bottom, right behind the red trees, is that part of the sidewalk or is that what it's?
This is part of the right of way and it is pavers.
It is pavers, right?
Yes.
So are they, what are they just free, freeing in there and then up?
Well, no, our detail, so our detail has them on concrete or masoned up. Is that the question?
Yeah, they're in concrete.
Because of the differential settlement, we have issues with pavers, so we do put them on a concrete base. Is that, is that, did I answer the question?
Yeah, I just thought there was something to what city that you didn't explain with concrete. I know James wrote that.
Well, I mean, we, we wouldn't do slate, but we would do something.
No. Slate sidewalks that are old and broken, slate sidewalks that are old and broken, but we don't, like, you're not forced to take them in. We just, part of city projects, we replace with concrete. Well, if they put their own, you can't put your own pavers on it for a sidewalk or an apron. That's so they had to come out. Yes, you're right, they did have it now.
Okay, so, and then lighting. We have a composite lighting and I know that this was confusing.
It's the lighting.
Yes, those are, so we prepared the lighting design for the exterior and then the architect prepared the lighting design for the garage spaces. That was kind of difficult to, for everyone, for us, for you. So we actually had a third-party lighting consultant redo all the lighting in a composite manner so that we knew the contribution of the garage lights with the outdoor sightlights. And we'll provide this to your professionals. But I just want to go over the results of that are very similar, especially for the exterior. When they, and I know your engineers saw this, that their calculations were a little bit different than ours. That's because the points at where they were measured were different. So instead of them replicating our grid in the calculations, it was off by three or four feet. And when you have a fourteen-foot mounted light, three or four-foot difference in the grid calculation means something. I mean, it changes. So we're now more uniform. We've matched the grids, we've matched the calculation inputs, we've created a composite plan, and I can tell you what relief we need. The relief really hasn't changed, but there is some relief given the proximity of this parking lot to the Westerly property boundary. Even though we're using shielded lights, twenty-seven-hundred Kelvin fixtures, fourteen-foot-high mount heights, we have a six-foot-high privacy fence behind it, we're proposing landscaping long and around and trees. The calculations do show some lighting on the property line between zero-point-two-foot candles and zero-point-seven-foot candles, where your ordinance requires a maximum of zero-point-one foot candles. So in order to get to that zero-point-one, we have to eliminate the fixtures or point the fixtures in a way that they're forward throw. And I'm reluctant to do this. When I put a fixture up near a residential home, I want the back of the fixture facing the home so that there's a glare shield and there's no glare on that residential home. If I were to reorient this and say, place the light fixture in that island, I could forward throw and cover the light, cover the parking spaces, but there's a greater likelihood of glare in the first floor of that residential home. So I think this is a better alternative. The zero-point-two, zero-point-seven, zero-point-seven actually happens on the Northerly property line. This property line, which is the Westerly property line, which is closest to our residential neighborhood. That's where the.
So what does that mean by phrase that they actually see the light source?
Exactly.
That's one of the problems, yes.
Jim, what about, so there's two things, which is illumination, which is just how bright it is, and then staring up at the light. You don't want to stare up at the light. That's like worst-case scenario. So glare is an intrusive thing. It's a nuisance. Illumination is less of a nuisance than glare, in my opinion. I think everyone would agree that no one wants a flashlight in their face.
So what about lowering the mounting height or changing those two fixtures? Is that something that could be done or have you looked into that?
Yes, we could lower the mount height, but I don't know that we would get the throw in the aisle. So we might. Zero-point-five right here, which is.
Yeah, but we only need to be point five, right?
Right.
So that's at a minimum right here. So if we lowered this mount height of the light in red here, this zero-point-five will go down. So it's a waiver either way. I mean.
No, oh, because minimum, minimum was point five.
Well, then you'll be shining into the.
Then you might not have uniformity, right?
So the two lights, the fourteen-foot you're talking about are these two red dots?
Yes. At the top of what's shown up there, yeah, along the property line here. So, and actually you can see, these are the calculated values, one-three, point-three, point-four, I know there's a point-two in here.
And the impact is on the house to the northwest.
Correct, right here.
And northeast.
Well, right, but.
And then, well, to the northeast, that's up here.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, that also is.
But the lighting there, so it's right here. So there's, I mean, there's vegetation and landscaping between that house and these plants.
But how, but how do we get from, I'm sorry, how do we get from that point-five that's in the parking lot, sitting there at point-five? Suddenly, when we go over the fence, we're at point-seven and there's no light. So how does that happen?
It's the additive nature of illumination. So as soon as you start having, you're right, I don't know why.
Because that doesn't make any sense to me.
Because this is the building that has light the most.
Right. It's further, you're going further away, so I have to possibly be point-seven.
So I'd like to say that it's wrong.
It would be great if you could say that it's wrong and it's really will.
So this is the composite design, and you're right. So look at that. So along that property line, starting at the top where I have zero-point-three, which is that corner, the recalculated values are zero-point-two, zero-point-two, zero-point-three, point-three, point-five. And then as we get closer to this one, this one corner here is now point-nine.
Point what?
Point-nine.
Which corner?
I'm sorry.
But how do you go from point-five to point-nine and you're further away?
So.
That's picking up the garage lighting.
Exactly.
Yeah, but the garage lighting, or the other, the other inside the garage, of the interior garage from there.
Whatever's underneath the garage.
Oh, okay, okay.
As long as we, we understand.
So I can certainly work with your, and I know that this plan is like this afternoon, basically, that we've worked with the lighting designer. We can work with your professionals to smooth some of these out as best we can, if you're comfortable doing that. I don't think that we're gonna get to zero-point-one along the property line. I think we're gonna need a waiver for that. I also don't think that we're gonna meet the average, given the height of the fixtures and that we're trying to reduce the number of fixtures. And then because we're not meeting the average, there's also a ratio. That's the average to, average to min. That, so those three things are what we would require a waiver from if there's no other way, you know, we can't come up with a better way to do it. And I, and I'm not convinced we can because we've gone through numerous iterations. It really has to do with the lighting fixtures being located five feet from the property.
Yeah, but why don't they locate them in another?
So, so we have done that before, but, so we can't obstruct the drive aisle. If we put a fixture here at the tip of the smaller island, what I'm concerned about is the glares towards that hall. I'd much rather have the shielded backplate where they cannot see the fixture, the actual light, the LED panel. They can't see the light. They can see the illuminance from the light, but they can't see the glare of the fixture. If I move it over here and try and light the Westerly parking area from it, I have a concern that they would actually see the source of the light.
I think that at this point, we don't want to keep going on with this, in my opinion. But having anything that is a point-six or a point-seven or anything like that, to me, is too much for the residents. It's too much. So it's like, figure it out, gather together, figure out what the best approach is because a waiver like that, I would be against a waiver like that. That's that egregious. Like, you know, if it's a point, if it's a point-two versus a point-one, okay, I mean, I'd be much more amenable to that, but a point-one to a point-seven, I'm struggling with that. Now, I don't know if anybody else has a.
These lights are gonna be on all night long, right?
Right, these lights are on all night long.
So you had said you would either need an exception for the amount of light spillage over the property line or an exception for the drive aisle of this outdoor parking area being too dim. Is that, that's the trade-off?
That would be, that would be one alternative is to dim the outside parking area below point-five.
Because I, I'm not gonna give my personal opinion, not everybody else's. If you need an exception one way or the other, I would be much more proud to give an exception for a dim parking area than for light spillage into our residential homes.
Got it.
Okay. I agree with that. So.
True deal.
That's a good point, that there are cars that are going, that are circulating around the parking area.
It's a double-edged sword, but I think there's a way of getting a nice uniformity without having excess light. So I think, I was talking with Sam about some ideas. Okay, so we can move on then. And we understand the goal is less impact on the neighbors. And again, the polarized lights, we don't want them impacting the residents in the new building either.
I have one more question about lighting, sorry, before we move on. So you said in that bottom left corner, it's a point-nine now, that right there. So you don't have any numbers going north from there, but if we're worried about light spillage coming from the garage, is there light spillage along that property line?
So along that property line, right at the property line where the calculation is?
He said he's asking going north from point-five.
Yeah, going north, going to the right.
Yeah, going to the right.
There is, there is, there certainly is light along here.
Right, so we'd like to see that.
As soon as you go behind the property line, I'm seeing all zeros.
Zeros behind the fence?
Yes. But right in front of the fence, we're at one-point-three, one-point-two, one-point-one, and that's spillage from the fixtures beneath the building.
And so then, just along this vein, so where you, we do see right here are these point-sevens and everything. Is that inside the fence or outside the fence? Is that what the neighbors are seeing or what we're seeing right inside the fence?
It's actually inside the fence. It's actually along the fence, inside the fence because of the mount height is fourteen feet and then the angle that the light comes down, it's going to be cut off by the fence. The fence is gonna cast a shadow and by the time that shadow hits the residential area, of course, it's gonna be far dimmer. But the lighting programs even today are not that detailed to shadow, to create the shadow, the fence shadows.
Okay, and then again, that is the objective standard that we can use, right, to evaluate lighting for the people who are living in that property when they're looking at this new development and has light in its, you know. and has light in its, you know, sphere that we can objectively describe and standardize. So, yes, it's at that very low level at the ground, but between the ground and the source is what they're seeing. And we know it's in that range. So that's why we're shooting for this very low standard at the ground.
Yep, okay.
So just to get us on to the next point, relative to this issue with the lighting at the property boundary, I think what the applicant would agree for the purposes of tonight, for the purposes of this application, is no waiver at the property boundary. So we'll comply with the orders. And we'll work with the board's professionals to come up with a parking plan, or lighting plan for inside the parking lot that might, that we might need a design waiver for the standard inside of the parking lot below 0.5, but we would not request a waiver for the property boundary. So that would be the ask. Understanding the board's concern, I think that's a more reasonable way to approach it. If for whatever reason we absolutely couldn't figure out a solution to that, which I think we can, then we'd have to come back and ask for further relief, understanding that it probably wouldn't be granted. So we should work really hard to work with the professionals to come up with a plan that works.
And.
So you're saying you're going to get it to 0.1?
Yes, correct.
Going to get it to 0.1, so that's.
Right, but we.
But if they can't, they have to come back.
The only thing is that we might need a waiver for the lighting inside of the parking lot below 0.5 in certain places. But Jim's going to figure out a way to make that not happen.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the way to get that done is to use lower mount heights. As soon as we use a bollard, it's, there's no, because the fence is there. So if we use a 30 or 42 inch bollard behind a 72 inch fence, there's zero. There's not going to be any light behind the fence. So if we can make that work in a manner that is acceptable, then that's the way to do it.
I mean, to just beat the dead horse, but you said you were at like 1.2 next to that 0.9 from the garage interior lights? How are you going to do that?
We're going to shoot with the garage interior lights.
Just all.
I don't think the lighting consultant uses shields on the inside, and I think she's going to have to move over and shoot.
Yeah, whether they're, whether they're being mounted on the flat, or I'm not sure what's going on in that ceiling, but yeah, find a way.
Yeah, I mean, they're already tucked, right? They're already tucked within the structure, but the structure.
Let's hope so, because I'm seeing some out in the field that are coming at us, like Surf House, that are not. So make sure, figure out the ceiling design, and see where those fixtures are really being mounted in relationship to the opening, and if you need to put a skirt, or cornice, or some kind of belt course, or something, to give you that extra bit of shielding, yeah.
So that was it for my direct testimony?
While we're on lighting, sorry, I'm sorry to beat the dead horse. So there's obviously the lighting that you guys are putting on the site, there's also going to be lights from headlights. So can you tell us about cars, trucks driving around this thing? How is that light being shielded from these adjacent homes?
So a couple of different ways. First, through landscaping, because that's inside the fence, and then secondly, through the privacy fence itself, which is a solid, a solid fence. So a 30 inch headlight height. Actually, the newer ones are even better, because they're cut off. But even if you have like an older vehicle, that 30 inch cutoff, the proximity isn't there. You're not going to be able to get past that fence and the throw that we have. So as soon as you turn into the stall, your headlamps, as you know, as you pull into a garage, or wherever you pull in, and there's a wall, you'll see where your light's cut off, and that's the same thing here, except instead of a wall, we have a solid privacy fence.
So what is that fence made of? What is it?
Okay, we have a detail in the plan on sheet eight. So it is a six foot black vinyl privacy fence with an overall height of six feet. Yep, set with concrete. It's at the top right hand corner of sheet eight.
No gaps?
No gaps.
Good, thank you.
And before we, before we go to other questions, is there a reason why these swells are only one foot deep as opposed to one and a half or two foot deep? Because I know you'd mentioned that three feet is, is you hit water. So why aren't we getting a little closer to that three feet? So we can gather more water?
The root balls, basically.
The what?
The root balls of the plants and the shrubs that we're planting throughout. If we put the root balls in water, you know, the root system of the fence.
Yeah, you need to have separation between where that seasonal high is, right? Where that groundwater is, and where everything else is happening. So the trees and the shrubs, right, they're, when they're planted in the ground, they're two feet below grade. Three feet almost below grade, depending on what it is, right? But we need that separation between the seasonal high and the, and the bottom of those things. Usually, there's at least one foot.
Right, so, so I'm just, my biggest concern is the ones that are on the, on the north side, where they're both one feet. We said that the depth is one foot. The other ones are 1.5 and 1.75. I was just wondering, why is that one? Can we, can we inch out anymore on there? So that any, you know that here, any bit of water that we can capture, we want to capture.
Well, again, they're not really detaining.
Well, it's slowing things down, and in some cases, it retains. If you see some of our rain gardens, that water sits there. It doesn't always fall through, which is not really a bad thing.
I know, but I don't really know how those are designed. He's testified that these are not designed to retain. I don't know the outlets on those rain gardens. They may be elevated, so they're purposely holding, even if it's only six inches.
Right.
These are not designed that way. I don't know, I don't know that if he can.
And it's not possible to use plants that can detain?
There are.
It would be.
But there's, I don't know if there are other problems with holding the water on the site.
You could, it's just not designed to that. He could design a rain garden that has a proper vegetation outlet structure that's only eight inches to a foot, let's say. That, that might be de minimis, but it's possible, yes.
I just want to do everything we possibly can to not have that water end up in D Lake on these storms. And slow it down.
We also don't want it accidentally ponding.
No, you're absolutely right, you're right. We want, we want the right mix. You're absolutely right, yes. We want to do it right, but that's why, that's why I'm asking.
And we are right, we are right there. We actually had Geotech out there, and they let, you know, they left the holes open for 24 hours for the groundwater to settle. We are literally right there. So we had a landscape architect design the plants to make sure that the balls had enough. I mean, if we don't want, if we want to go with just perennials and not woody vegetation, I don't think that would be attractive year round, but I mean, there are alternatives, but we have to trade off here. You know, what kind of landscaping we can do versus getting maybe, maybe three or four more inches of storage. I don't think, I mean, if you ask me, I want the woody vegetation, that sucks up the water, and that develops. It's transpiration, so as the water from the root system comes up, it's transpired through the leaves, and that's one way of mitigating runoff as well. It's not, we never calculate that, but that's how I feel like the cycle works. It's, you know, the board says we want three or four more inches, we'll find it, and we'll change, we'll go to more of a grass and prairie.
I want as much as I can get, personally. Like I said, I'm one vote, but knowing what this town goes through in the rain, I want every inch I can get.
So it's also, you kind of lose some of the warm body benefit as you move away from woody vegetation, so that's the trade off.
I would leave that with you and Sam to kind of figure out what's the best thing that we can do to capture the most water the right way, not cause ponding for long periods of time, and do the best we can for the city.
And to be very honest?
Yes.
I think this is the best one, do you think?
That's, that's, that's what I need. I need to know.
That's what I wanted to hear.
That's what I want to hear. I say, this is the best we can do, and this is the best solution. I want to hear that.
This is the best, we've gone through, I don't know how many iterations of this, with your professionals.
Okay.
I do agree with Jim, I don't mean to cut you off, I do agree with Jim, you know, if you trade off the hardy vegetation, that does absorb more than just the grass, and aesthetically, there's a benefit to not having just grass, but aesthetics aside, I do agree that for the amount that we might be, the amount that the applicant might be gaining, having that vegetation that's there year round, being able to absorb all that, probably outweighs any benefit.
You're the professionals?
I'll drag you where you want.
I need your, I need your honest opinions to do this the right way. Okay.
So you said you'd finish with your direct. We want to go through professional letters before we get to questions.
So I did try and touch on a number of the issues in both the planner's and engineer's letter. And a lot of the planner's letter is architectural.
Correct.
So I know the chair, I know you like to go point, I'm pointing on this, but I don't know if you want me to just say architect, architect, architect.
For me, I don't mean to interrupt again, Jim, but for me, he's hit everything except for lighting, but lighting's going to be adjusted, so.
All right, so your, your report, you're okay? Okay.
And Don, do you want to defer your report to, we have Dan here?
I'm just checking.
I would like to mention the pedestrian warning system, because that's probably a little bit more than me and the architect.
Oh, okay.
So in your 4.4, which is on page nine of 18, this is your letter updated July 14, 2025. We do look for, and we do propose pedestrian warning systems whenever we can't get a car length, or car length, out of the garage. So in this case, we actually have the car length out of the garage before the sidewalk. It has to do with visibility. So as you're pulling out of a garage, the driver's side window clears at about halfway, right where your windows. In this case, we have 21, 20, over 21 feet between the face of the building and the property, which is right here. Okay, so we have 21.7 from the face of the garage to the property line. Then there's another four or five feet between the property line and the sidewalk. So driver visibility starts back here when the car is about halfway out of the garage. I, there is no engineering reason for a pedestrian warning system, given that length between the face of the garage and the start of the walkway, because there's plenty of visibility, and that's the most important thing, is visibility. Visibility and illumination.
And there's, there's, I'm assuming there's a garage door, so the noise of the door, I'm assuming, and tell me if I'm right, the noise of the door would also be an alert that a car is coming.
I won't, I don't know what Dan has planned. I hope he's using a quiet garage short. But he definitely will see, there will be motion, and that car will be visible to the pedestrian, and more importantly, the pedestrian visible to the car, well prior to there being a conflict.
Well, how tall are the shrubs that are lining? Because I know, yeah, they see them when they're right in front of them, but they don't see them.
They don't even see them in a crosswalk, so.
So this.
And I also, again, we ask for an auditory as well as visual warning, because not everyone has good vision or is sighted. So that's, that's our standard now, auditory and visual warning systems for these crossings that are not happening at a typical street intersection. I think it's fair.
Is it battery free?
Yes, I mean, we can put in an auditory, a peeping. I just, if I were the neighbor, I.
That could be.
It is 20 feet away? I'm sorry, it's one, two, three, four, 100 feet away from the neighbor? Can you tell me how many, how many feet the driveway is from the westerly neighbor?
11, 13, 14, so a little bit, maybe closer to 150.
Okay, I don't think the auditory warning is going to be a problem for them.
I'd refer to auditory warning and a light, light warning as well. I know you can come out of the garage and you can see, and I actually like that about it. I know the shrubs are only about 20, 12 to 24 inches, but anything that's going to help, you know, a driver may come out and not look, might not stop, I'd rather err on the side of caution than have a pedestrian be hit on the sidewalk.
Okay, I mean, the balance is yours, right? So on balance, you know, that's what this board's job, that's your job, to balance the testimony. So if you want an auditory warning, we do it.
We do.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do both.
Do it, what do you mean both?
We'll do both, auditory and visual.
Is there something in your report about streetlights?
Yeah, I think we had. Sorry.
So I think from Donna's letter, that was, we basically agree, you know, where I testified differently, or provided some testimony with regard to landscaping, or that one driveway issue was something that I wanted to testify to, but otherwise, I believe the architect is going to go through pretty thoroughly on your comments.
Okay, yeah, I believe that note was added, so.
Oh, okay, great, great.
I'm sorry, did I miss a question?
No, we're good. Don't worry, I missed some.
So I think we can go to questions from the board, if there's any further?
It depends on if our planner is satisfied with.
Yes.
With everything that was brought up, okay. Does, does anybody on the board have any further questions of this witness? Professional, our professionals, do they have any questions for this witness? All right, if not, I'll open up to the public to, for any questions to this witness. Please give us your, or Jack, you.
No name and address, no, you don't have to be.
Yeah, hi, Eric Gallobo, 908 Fifth Avenue. Hi, thank you for your testimony. I just have a few questions, and I want to confirm that I'm able to ask landscape, parking, and civil engineering questions of you. Okay, great. So I just want to know if there has been any estimate of the total parking demand for the 126 unit development?
We've met the ordinance requirement?
A different question.
Okay, so we have not studied that. We, we actually.
That's okay, the answer is no, it's okay, the answer is no.
Do you know what, on that point, I forgot them, we actually are closing out a number of the driveway curb cuts, so.
Sorry, before we, I know where you're going with that, I just want to sort of ask a follow on question. So there hasn't been an estimate of the total parking need? And therefore, do you expect that the parking need generated by this 126 development will exceed the 131 spaces that are being provided? In other words, will there be cars from residents at this building, and their visitors, and the commercial properties who will be relying on street parking?
So really, it is the same answer. The, we are required to meet an ordinance standard, and that's what we've done. The parking is going to be controlled by the management company. That's going to limit the number of residential cars that park there, and when you have that limitation, it changes, there's really no way to study it, because that number becomes fixed. It becomes fixed with the number of parking passes or permits that are handed out. So to answer your question, we haven't studied it. We complied with the ordinance, and the management company will control the demand and the utilization of the parking.
I appreciate your answer. I think you're still answering a slightly different question.
That's his answer. You don't have to accept it, but if that's his answer.
I don't think he's answered my question.
He thinks he did. That's his answer. If you don't want to accept it, you don't have to.
Understood.
But he doesn't have to change his answer.
Okay, then I will ask a different question.
Then you, that, go ahead.
Will street parking be required to meet some or, some demand created by this building?
Yeah, so for the commercial elements, the ordinance does not require parking. So on-street parking will be utilized for the commercial, and the commercial's modest, it's less than 2,000 square feet, but on-street parking will likely be utilized for the commercial.
Understood, okay. So with the movement of parking being controlled by the management company, the assignment of spaces, and you have testified, correct, that spaces may not be assigned to particular residents? the assignment of spaces, and you have testified correct that spaces may not be assigned to particular residents?
We have not, may I just say something that we have said that the next person that testifies will speak to that? We have not, that was not va- validated here by this witness.
How will you manage parking churn, essentially? People entering the site, driving all the way through, not able to find a spot, driving all the way out, and then having to rely on street parking? That's the question.
So the parking garage and the outside area is designed with two-way traffic. So that traffic circulation is designed in accordance, not only the ordinance, but standard engineering and accepted practices. I, I don't see an issue with traffic circulating if there are no parking stalls circulating, turning around and coming back out to the site.
I, the parking lot seems adequately designed to allow movement, but how will you prevent churn? Essentially, people entering the parking lot unable to find a spot, then needing to leave, therefore creating one in-trip and one out-trip just to look for a parking spot? It seems that parking assignment would also almost be required.
So I thought I answered the question, but maybe Mr., the operator is here and maybe his testimony can further clarify how the management of the parking spaces will work.
Right, okay. Um, so your plan isn't up anymore, but there are some notations on it that refer to a six-foot vinyl fence. Are you planning on demolishing my fence?
Um, could you tell me which, sorry, I don't have. Could you tell me which property?
The north and, um, the north and west side. Fifth. I'm, I'm the cutout. So both the, our rear fence.
This is you right here.
That's correct. Our rear fence to your left.
Right here.
Yeah, and the fence line all the way along the building already exists. It's a six-foot wooden stockade fence. There's also existing trees along the property line that are not notated. I want to make sure that you are not proposing removal of our existing trees or removal of our existing fence. Further, does that six-foot, our six-foot wooden privacy fence ends at approximately where the southeast corner of our house is? So we're right, where that, right, yeah, right about there. And there is an existing chain link fence that has been there since I was a child. And so if you do intend to replace the fence, do you intend to replace it with a different material? And if you intend to replace the fence, is, does the requirement not require, does it not, is it not required to be two foot inside your property line?
Okay, so the first thing is that it appears that your fence was surveyed and it appears to be well on, on your property. We did not and we cannot propose demolition of your fence. Um, and no, the fence is permitted to be installed on the property line, which is what we propose. Was there another part to it? And we, we don't propose any work to, you know, cut trees down on someone else's property.
Kind of on the property line, but, um. My, 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 our, our fence is on the property line. It was built prior to the current ordinance. It is on the property line.
Okay, so the surveyor that conducted this gave you more property than, than her house, what your surveyor shows? I don't know. I, I would have to.
Right, so.
Unless that fence.
Would you be willing to match the material of your fence to our existing fence along your western property line?
Which is a wood stockade?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
No problem.
Great.
And I'm sorry, that surveying gray line right there that I'm tracing with the hand?
Yeah.
That appears to be maybe the limit of a driveway patio. Your fence is actually shown.
Well, it ends somewhere, yeah. It ends to the left. There is an existing, uh, uh, chain link fence that's been there since I can remember.
Okay, it looks like the fencing crouches, that's all. I, I'm sure that's something that could be worked out at the time.
Great. We would prefer, we would appreciate being contacted when that is being discussed and decided. Thank you.
We can do that.
Okay. Um, so in addition, in your plan and the exhibit that you passed out, you show a 10-foot buffered area along the westerly and northerly rear property lines in the parking lot?
Correct.
Um, can you go to your, um, uh, calculation page? This was very helpful. So is it not required that that full 10-foot be landscaped? Or is that just a building buffer?
Um, we're not seeking relief for the encroachments within that, that buffer. We're meeting the buffer requirements through the solid fence as well as the landscaping.
Do you mind explaining that?
Right, it, it's part of the redevelopment plan versus the landscape ordinance in the regular ordinance.
Um, but, so how, how is it that the redevelopment plan requires a 10-foot planted buffer at property lines? But this shows less than that in two locations.
Okay, so it's P7. It requires a planted buffer of no less than five feet in width as well as a solid fence where the property abuts a residential line. The design of the buffer, including plantings, fence location and design, provided said fence does not exceed six feet in height, shall be at the discretion of the planning. So the development ordinance requires a five-foot buffer where the underlying zone requires a 10-foot buffer, but it's preempted by the redevelopment.
Redevelopment plan.
Redevelopment, thank you.
So what do you have in the renovation?
Well, I don't know why we did a 10-foot buffer, because that means our, our landscape calculations are even more or provide even more.
I mean, could you put landscape up to the top of the lawn? Is that a problem?
Couldn't.
So those are parking spaces.
Well, that's a wrong decision, but yeah. This turn around. So the intent is.
Have a little backup space?
Correct. I mean, if we graced it, yeah, but that's not going to, this is all behind a six-foot fence. This is not, you know, not seen from, I, I think it's a better alternative to have the backup and not crush the plans.
And what is that interior barrier? The black line, not on the exterior of the landscaping, but the interior, those are just.
Inside and outside of the road stops?
You know, like the.
This is curvy, yeah. Oh, right here, that's the building. This is the, the building above.
Right, but, but over by the trees, by the 10-foot buffer area?
Yes.
You see, right, so that's the fence on that side, on the exterior side of the landscaping. What's on the interior side?
That's it, that's the landscaping, this is a curve.
That's just the symbol.
Just a curve.
Yes.
It's not an actual barrier, it's just a curve.
Okay, so from your testimony, am I to, uh, this is related to the lighting levels of point seven and point nine at the fence line? Am I to understand that you believe the six-foot fence will reduce that to some de minimis number on the other side of the fence?
Well, even further, we've agreed to meet the ordinance requirements of point one of the policies.
Okay, great.
So that's how it will be.
Great. Um, and then in terms of grading and water flow, is it designed to flow away from adjacent properties?
Yes, it is. Well, yes, it is.
Yes, because as you know, we had a storm event this past weekend where I was in knee-deep water at the bottom of my driveway.
So your grade is actually higher than the site?
Yes.
And you've provided swales that, that the water, well, we talked about the swales, but we've lowered the grade so that water from your property actually will flow onto ours and not my source.
Fantastic. Um, okay. Oh, yeah, so this relates to the design of sidewalks on Fourth, Fifth and Memorial? Can you go back to your rendered site plan and show us? Uh, if you would zoom in on your north and west corner adjacent to our property, I believe it seems that your sidewalk jogs.
Yes, it does.
What is the reason for that, considering this will be the only place on the entirety of Fifth Avenue where that happens?
So it's this tree that we're, we're trying to get around the root system and bring it and match your sidewalk along your front.
I believe this is very atypical arrangement for our city and that tree is new or existing? I mean, there is one there, but it is in terrible shape.
That is the existing tree that we're showing.
Well, that tree is badly diseased and falling apart, um, as all of them are.
So the idea.
Would you consider aligning the sidewalk, which is quite standard and all the way in a straight line as a method of being able to expand the swales on your side of the sidewalk? I know that that is city property and not your property.
The idea here was to, to provide a median for the trees and to provide spacing for the existing trees? Could we? Yes. But that's the design intent is to set the sidewalk back so that we're not continually disturbing the root system of, of the trees. Again, that, that's, that's a bounce. Can we? Yes. If the board says make it line up, of course we can. But in light of the detriment of the existing trees.
I believe those are new trees and you are, you are not, you will not be able to save those existing trees. I, I.
Those, those are new trees. Those are the proposed.
Yeah, so my suggestion, and, and new trees, we know can survive within the existing verge that is left between the current sidewalk line and the, what seems to be happening with it, which is this curve in the sidewalk, which happens nowhere else I can think of in Asbury Park. Maybe, I, yeah, it seems suspect. Second question is the sidewalks, and this happens on both Fourth and Fifth Avenue. The second, and the reason I suggest this or ask this question is if you aggregate more green space to the owner's property direction, you would have more opportunity to expand those swales for stormwater retention on their side of the property.
Well, that is true, that if we move the sidewalk towards Fifth, we would, in effect, but, but remember, we're, we are proposing the swales in the property line.
Correct.
Not within the right of way.
Understood.
So we wouldn't propose this swell system in the city's right-of-way. It's really a private, you know, it's privately maintained. You know, on balance, there's a reason why the trees aren't diseased and not doing well and they just don't have, they don't have the room that we're proposing.
No.
No, I, my disease.
Because the utility company has butchered them.
Well, technically, there are, there are no utility, there are no utility lines on that side, on that side of Fifth Avenue. The utility lines run in the rear yard. So we have, on, just on Fifth Avenue, on that one block, we do not have utility lines. They're in the rear yard.
Those haven't been?
Never touched. It's just diseased.
They're just terrible.
It's just diseased. They're in terrible.
Are there any other questions?
I do have further questions, sorry. So the size of the sidewalk on Memorial Drive where, and, and can you zoom in on Memorial Drive for us for a second? So as people park on Memorial Drive, I realize you've added small access points. I'm, are you aware of the arrangement that we make in downtown where it's essential? Would you consider flipping this so that the planted side was against the, the building, allowing people to essentially exit their cars and get right onto the sidewalk? Otherwise, they're going to be walking right through your planting beds, which look really nice. But flipping the arrangement will help them be more well-maintained? No, no, no. Moving the plantings to the bill, against the building, between your retail spaces so that when you get out of a car, walk through the bike lane, the first thing you step on is solid pavement?
Well, I mean, obviously the intent was for, for people to park, use the gore striping and center themselves on an access. Because there is, you know, between the gore striping and the, and the lane. But again, can it be done? Yes. I, I think this is the preferred street scape cross-section that we see throughout the city.
I think we'd have a problem with the shade trees too. I think if you move them back too close to the building, right?
You would leave tree beds where the trees are.
Keep the trees and move the rest of the.
And you move the beds to the building. First of all, it will soften the lack of activity on that level of the building a little bit.
You're going to lose some trees.
No, no, the trees stay. Their trees are in tree pits.
And then the benches and the plantings go against the building.
All right, I think that the question has been asked.
Yes.
And now we need an answer.
Um, and I have.
The answer would be, could we? Yes. Do I think this is a better design as proposed? Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
So, um, and then can you show us the design of the driveway around Fourth, the Fourth Avenue entrance? You mentioned that there's going, is it a roll-top or is it a lever-arm? One makes far less noise than the other. I know there needs to be an.
That hasn't been discussed yet.
Okay.
That was not testified to yet.
And then can you zoom in even further in so we see this, the design where it meets the bike lane on Fourth Avenue? So you have a split here. Uh, how many cars would be able to queue in that area if you have two cars entering or two cars leaving at the same time?
So in the apron area?
Sure.
So the apron is actually, you know, it, it's over 20 feet long, so one car could queue either way. I mean, that's not the intent.
And is there any sort of like rumble stripping or something, I don't, that's not the right term, but something to indicate where the sidewalk traverses the entire driveway? So like something that tells them they're on that surface?
Were we required to provide delineation pads at, at either side of it? Are you saying like a going across?
Yes.
I mean, we could change the texture of the block or the design of the pavers to indicate that that's a, a, you know, a crossing. We could do that.
Sure, yes.
But it's the, the ADA delineation pads that usually.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Your next, um, there was, uh, there was, I know that while there was discussion, you'd mentioned something about, about the parking, the exterior parking. Is someone else going to talk about that? I'm assuming someone else will talk about that?
Well, I, I just want to point out that we're closing a number of the curb cuts and that we're actually adding additional parking spaces on-site. On-street, I'm sorry, on-street. So just to put a number to that, um, on Fourth Avenue, 260 feet of driveway will be removed and that will increase the number of parking stalls on Fourth Avenue by 12.
By 12?
By 12. And then on Fifth Avenue, we will be increasing, about two parallel parking spaces will be increased there because of the closure of a driveway apron there. It's a, it's a smaller area, but, um, and it depends on how the city stripes it, but we believe that they can get two additional on Fifth.
Are you planning to put some kind of loading zone area in front of your front door there? I see you have that large, uh, kind of pad reaching the sidewalk. Typically, when I see that in development, I hear they're, you're requesting an area for like loading.
Could you tell me, are you saying this?
On the Fifth Avenue side of the building?
Oh, Fifth Avenue, okay.
It's fourth.
Other side.
Oh.
All right, your building entrance, this large sidewalk pad that reaches up to the street?
I, I don't think that that was, um.
Okay.
That, that was really just a generous, like, kind of like a gateway.
Okay.
Into the building, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very bad.
Well, hold on.
We'll get to you.
You're going to.
Okay, sure.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other? Is that all?
Any questions?
So we're talking about a total of, we're adding 14 parking spaces.
Well, we're not adding, in theory, because that whole area on Fourth Avenue is permitted, like you're allowed to park there. You're not ticketed for blocking the driveway there.
Okay.
They're all like depressed because it's just how old it is, but in how it's actively set up and used, you would be losing the space that's currently, that's going to be added for this driveway, which is probably two cars.
So, so does that mean that it's not striped today and it will be striped tomorrow? You know what I mean? Like when this is put together, does that mean that the striping will change the amount of parking spaces in this area?
Are we, I mean, there's no striped stalls on this, there's no stripe right now.
Okay.
There's no striped stalls proposed by this.
Yes.
If the parking becomes an issue in the area, we will have to stripe it, but I can't say what that would be.
John Chirby?
Yes.
Public is right to question your witness.
Yes, yes, I was just trying to absorb that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Was trying to understand where we got 14. Okay, any other questions from the board members? Professionals?
I still don't see 14, because if you're 25 feet up, I'm sorry to keep that going. If you're 25 feet up at the crosswalk, maybe you get one car on the eastern side of your apron. You're not fitting 11 on the other side.
And they already exist, so it represents a loss.
Not your turn yet, not your turn. Okay.
So there's no striping and we're closing 260 feet of existing driveway. So I know that the driveways don't lead to anywhere now that the building has been demolished, but historically, they, the driveways have been there and we're closing them and proposing full face curbs.
So pretty much we're saying that people have been parking there anyway.
Functionally.
Functionally, so whether you're gaining them or not gaining them.
Which is why it wasn't, I guess, part of my primary.
No, I understand, I understand. As long as we understand what you, what you mean by it, it's, we understand. Anything else? All right, public?
So.
What's your question?
My question is if the parking exists and is legal, how can you count this as an addition when your driveway will lead to the reduction of the currently available parking, linear parking footage?
So you're making the assumption that it is legal?
It is.
And if, in New Jersey, parking in front of a driveway is not legal, regardless of if that driveway leads to a building or not. So it might be, I don't ignore it or allow it, but I don't know that our term that is legal, you're blocking the driveway that legally exists. I know it's fenced, it doesn't lead anywhere, so this is semantics, but we meet the parking requirements as is.
Okay.
I was just bringing up the point of what we're doing.
That's fair. Any other question?
It strikes for her.
I would say that, you know, typically, you're gonna have a driveway whenever you have a garage. So you're putting 131 spaces in this building and you're losing two on the sidewalk for that. So while, yes, you're losing on-street space with one driveway, it's kind of a gain in a way that you're putting everything inside rather than on the street.
Any other, your next witness?
Why don't we, why don't I bring up Paul Milstein from Douglas, and we'll hit those couple of questions we got on the parking garage so you can get those out.
Okay.
I might have to call Paul back after Dan testifies in case there's more operational questions, but we'll see how he do.
You've got till about 9:30, so.
Right.
Use your time.
Let's go, Paul.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemn swear or affirm? Testimony about giving this man the truth, the truth about the marriage.
I do.
You state your name again for the record.
Paul Milstein, Douglas Development Corporation.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so Paul, quickly, I know you're familiar with this board, but explain to the board again what you do for Douglas and your role with the project.
So I am, my current role for Douglas Development is Director of Development, Vice President of the company. Been with the company for 38 years. Worked my way through, so I'm responsible for all the developments and all the jurisdictions. They develop in multiple states, so I travel as the company travels. So I've been associated with this project from the beginning, bringing through redevelopment plan and, like I say, I think we're getting super close, which is exciting. So anyway, that's me.
Good, so there was a question that came up during Jim's testimony about how we're gonna handle the parking with respect to the residents. Are we gonna use tags? Are we gonna use some kind of identification? Can you explain how you envision that work?
So, and the way we approach parking management is a fluid situation. We'll start at a reasonable level of enforcement and detail, and then if it works, we'll continue and we'll ramp up as necessary. So we'll start out by renting parking spaces. They'll be paid for. We'll determine something so it's not a free-for-all, and they'll be hang tags by the unit number, and we'll make one-to-one available. So you'll be able to, Unit 201 will be able to rent a parking space and that hang tag will say 201. They can park in any space. We won't assign spaces initially. We will have a towing contract and we will have parking management. And if there's any abuse, someone will be, we will go through that garage on a regular basis and tow anyone without a hang tag. That's the way we start. If it gets progressively worse, we will put a key fob entrance on the door. The door is intended to be a rolling coil jet door, so it is a very fast, very quiet door. It does make some noise, so it will alert the pedestrians in some fashion. The preference would be to leave the door up during the day and hope that the key tag system is sufficient as far as enforcement issues. But if it's a problem, we'll drop the door and you will get a key fob for every resident that's entering the building. We'll have to swipe in, swipe out, and the door will close behind them. And then we can go from there. There's many levels we can go. We try to, again, start the least intrusive and see if it's effective. But that, our initial intent is hang tags, one per unit numbered, and we go from there.
Now, is the garage doors, are there two garage doors or one?
There'll be two garage doors.
There'll be two, so one in, one out, and they're quick, they're quick.
Yeah, they're called that. Jet doors, whisper doors, they're very quick.
Right, okay. All right.
Can you just clarify what you said? Do tenants rent a space?
Yes.
Separately from their unit?
Yes, that's the intention.
Every... Do they have to rent a parking space?
They do not. Some tenants don't have cars.
That's fine, but.
Others would prefer to park on the street for free.
Pardon me?
Others would prefer to park on the street for free. It's aspirating issues for residents.
Yeah, I think the intent of the redevelopment plan is that tenants with cars will be afforded a place to park because you're providing the parking that was required per unit and,
Yeah, I mean-
You know, the idea that a tenant may decide not to pay for parking and try and park, I'm sorry, James, is there permit parking in this neighborhood?
There's not.
There's not, so.
So there's no deterrent from them to just park on the street?
We, you know, we have the potential here for, yeah.
From a legal perspective?
Sure.
Here you go.
There would be no reason to have mandatory parking requirement if it wasn't going to be used by the tenants.
Well, it's transient, it's not allowed to be transient.
No, no, the parking requirement is specific to the quantity of units and so on.
Right.
It relates directly to the usage of the property. So if you're saying that it's, they may not be parking there and they're parking out on the street, you're actually defeating the purpose of required parking. So those spaces should be used by those tenants.
That's the intention of the spaces, of course.
Yes, so, but if somebody says, we had, we experienced this once before downtown, where a developer did that, was charging what people were claiming to be an exorbitant rate, and all of a sudden, our on-street parking turned into a mess because nobody was renting the spaces and they were sitting there vacant. And that's directly-
Of course.
Defeating the purpose.
Right.
So we're gonna have to come up with-
Well, we could do it another way. We just found that it was a way to discourage abuse as well.
We need it to be a different way.
No problem.
The point of this is not to have 130-some-odd people on the street.
No, that was never the intent. I wouldn't build a garage.
So charging them for this is not, I'm sorry, it's not the right answer.
Okay, so then we won't charge them for it.
Couldn't they just add it to the cost?
I could do it 100 different ways. It's no problem.
Yes.
Understood.
The tenants are gonna have to use those spaces.
No problem. The tenants will have to use those spaces. Okay.
And the intention is that every tenant will at least have the ability to take one space.
Correct. That's correct.
So as far as that goes, then you just, you assume you price it into the monthly rent and each tenant gets a parking pass, right? That would be the way to do it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so that's, so we'll do it that way. I mean, it's-
Your testimony is so amended?
Yeah, I would say it is.
Thank you.
That's why we talk.
Okay.
Appreciate the advice.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board? Questions from the public about that?
May I ask one question?
Oh, so, of course.
You said that it's sort of, it sounds like sort of an honor system to go into the garage. You're gonna leave the door open. Will somebody be, you know, monitoring or?
Yeah, and it's actually not intended to be an honor system.
Oh, yeah, it was supposed to be a little stretch.
We will actually, it's intended to be regulated, so we'll issue a tag per unit. So we have a parking management company. That won't be full-time. They'll come through it, but we'll also have towing contracts that we'll also circle through on a regular basis. Because we found if you don't do that, it gets abused.
So it'll be a key fob?
No, no, a hang tag.
Well, there's a garage door, maybe, yes?
Yes.
So have somebody open the door.
Well, they'll, we'll have both, but they're gonna have hang tags.
Right, so I mean, somebody will be that has access.
Correct.
To open the door, right?
Right, but the tow truck guy wouldn't know who has, he's gotta see the hanging on the-
I understand.
But you said initially, there's no key fob. It's just gonna be open.
No, we can still issue key fobs for after-hours, but we like, we prefer to keep it open during the day if possible, just so it's not up and down, up and down, up and down. But if it becomes a problem.
Just daytime.
Correct. That's the preference, but it's adjustable. It's fungible as things, depending on how the operations go.
And, I don't know, do you want sign residents only parking? When it's important, when they do?
You mean as opposed to public parking?
No, if somebody visiting, somebody, you know, they don't, maybe don't know, if you're even open, then there's no sign. I mean, I know we get crazy about someone who's doing the doors.
Well, they're gonna have to note, put a sign that advises, you know,
Advance notice.
The towing.
Yeah.
Can't just-
Yeah, for sure.
So I would play devil's advocate.
I mean, it seems like a gate is really the solution to that problem, but-
If we're saying each unit gets one spot, you pay your rent, you get a spot. If someone doesn't own a car, now there's just gonna be empty spots in this parking lot.
There may be empty spots.
No, so what we do, and we're doing with the project now, some people will prefer two spots, and we won't commit to that in a lease, but what happens is if there's available spaces, we'll say, we'll give you the one, and we'll do the second one on a month-to-month basis as availability is, because it also takes a year to lease the building up. So we don't want spaces to be wasted, so we'll, again, that, it'll be a fluid situation, but the intention is not to have empty spaces and some people inevitably, but we want to. That's just, it happens.
That makes me feel better. So everyone gets a space if you get a unit, but there's a potential option to rent a second space.
But we, yeah, but we wouldn't guarantee that in a lease. It'll be on a month-to-month basis for the second space. As available.
Right, absolutely. Okay, any other questions? Any other questions from the public of this witness? No? Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Next.
Okay, Dan. He knows you're coming.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Sow my swear or affirm. Testimony about giving this man the truth, the truth about the marriage.
I do.
You state your name again for the record.
Daniel Zanetto.
And spell your last name again.
Z, like zebra, A-N-E-T-O.
You were qualified the last time you were here as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
Are you still so licensed?
Yes.
Licensed some good stuff.
Yes. All right, so, Dan, why don't you pull up your exhibit first? So I know that at the April meeting, the board reviewed the architecture. So I'm gonna have Dan just give a little bit of the overview and then an overview of what changed from the last meeting to today.
Okay, so I'll kind of start by going through the plans and highlighting some of the changes that were made since the last meeting. We went through each level last time. We talked about the retail spaces on Memorial Drive. And there was a suggestion to add additional doors for those spaces into the garage so that trash could be taken directly through the garage into the trash room rather than taking it out to the sidewalk and walking around. So we've added that for each space, so each space now has direct access into the garage. Also, on this floor, we're now indicating a trash compactor, so trash will come down. There's two chutes here for trash recycling. Trash compactor will handle that and we'll have some storage bins here. And if there's any questions on operations, then we can, Mr. Milstein here to testify to that again. But the intent is for the compactor to service the building and pickups would be by a private hauler. And, you know, as the building operates, the schedule of those pickups will be figured out and they will come as needed. There was a request we spoke about earlier with the civil engineers' testimony. So the bike room, there was discussion of adding a door with direct access out to Fifth Avenue. We investigated that and really just weighing the importance of the pervious area versus that kind of added convenience. We're leaning towards keeping the swales as they were designed, so we're not adding a second door into the bike room. So that access will come through the garage.
Are they supposed to walk through the garage door or through the lobby?
They could go either way, so you could come out onto Fourth, through the drive, or you could take it through the lobby out onto Fifth.
Okay.
Those lobby doors have like the handicap button? Do they open automatically?
I don't think we have that.
I was just wondering. Sometimes it's hard to get a bike through if you don't. People manage.
So that is the extent of the changes on the parking level.
Wasn't there a question about the, whether there was enough, if they were big enough, if the trash rooms were big enough and the recycling was large enough to be able to handle however many days we need to handle? Did we determine that, that that's okay, or did we not?
So our proposed solution is to add the compactor so that we'll have more
Okay.
trash storage. There's room for bins here, and then pickups will be scheduled as needed based on the size and what we can hold here.
That's private, private hauler.
But how are you handling recycling?
Same thing, bins here, private.
They're trash recycling, both private hauler.
But so the compactor will only deal with trash as opposed to recycle?
There's no other questions on the parking than the first floor, first residential floor. The only change on this floor is the layout of the courtyard. We're now indicating some turf area in the center here. We have an additional rendering of this space that we'll go through and you can see what's, what is planned for that courtyard space.
Paul, Mr. Trump, do you want us to, we have a good look back at our letter. So back to our original testimony from last month, though, are you indicating that you do have sufficient space, 12 square feet per floor area, and could hold four weeks of trash per organs in that room?
I think we're, we're saying that we will have a level of service that will account for that level of use.
That's, like, if you can't hold the four weeks, that would be a waiver. Is that what you're asking? Because you're just saying you can't do, you have a small trash. I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the board.
Wants to hold four weeks of trash.
Yeah, so, so they're, they're gonna do private hauling, so they don't have to do four weeks. So, you know, it's kind of a way out of that threshold, that standard.
It would make me feel better as opposed to as needed.
Right.
Is it every week?
Well, I would say-
You know, as opposed to, who's gonna know it's as needed?
Paul Milstein, Douglas Development, I'm good.
Yeah, you're good.
So it is unequivocally not big enough for four months worth of trash.
Four weeks.
Four weeks, which is a month. But anyway, that's not happening. So as we rent up, we'll rent 10 units. We'll have one pool a week, most likely. When we get to 30 units, we'll probably increase to two pools per week. As we get there, we'll go to three pools. We'll monitor, we'll monitor it. Again, we have other properties in the shore area that would, it's a fluid situation, but if we have to get the daily pickups, we will. If we have to do seven-day pickups- if we have to do seven-day pickups, we can, we have some properties that have that, that have a lot of restaurants, this won't be the case, but again, we will ramp up the amount of pools as necessary based on volume.
No, again, it's a minimum, so if they're doing more than the minimum, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, talking about the courtyard here, so the only change on this level is just the addition of the artificial turf area in the courtyard. And then moving through the upper floors, these are all unchanged since they were last presented.
So then before we go too high, can we talk about the windowless bedrooms?
Uh huh, so on, in the corner on each level, we have a one-bedroom unit that has a living space and has a bedroom, adjacent to that, there will be transom windows high on the wall here to allow daylight into the bedroom, and then this will have its own ventilation system, HVAC unit controlled by the occupant, so they can control that room individually.
And how many of those do we have, do we still have six, or has that changed? In the, in the whole development?
We have four.
Four? Last time, last time it was six, I just wanna make sure that, are we still sitting at six?
It's at least, it's at least six right now.
Six one-bedrooms, two on each of second floor.
Okay, right, yes.
And I know that there was.
There's this, this unit here at the northwest corner of the courtyard, and then the northeast corner of the courtyard.
Yeah, so it's on the fourth floor, so.
And that's on.
Three floors.
Three floors, so six total, correct.
Okay, and, just to touch on something that was in our planners' report also, is that those are not necessarily designated for affordable housing. They're not targeted for that.
No.
Actually, none, none of them are, why don't we?
That's why I wanna make sure that none of them are affordable.
Correct.
Okay.
Dan, why don't I pass this out while we're on the topic?
Sure.
So, one of the comments in Donna's review letter was that basically, we do a better job of distributing the affordable units around the building, so that's what Dan's gonna talk to you now, and this we would have to mark as a four. And we'll, we'll just call this, Dan, the affordable.
Yeah, affordable unit. Affordable unit mix exhibit. So what we've done is, without changing the unit count or the makeup of the building as far as one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, we've kinda shuffled around which units will be designated as affordable units, to provide more of a mix throughout, previously they were more or less kind of aligned along the west side of the, the building, and we're making efforts to sprinkle in some units on each level, so.
So is it the blue or the white?
The, the blue, the purplish blue is the affordable units. So on the first floor, we now have a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom along the Memorial Drive elevation, on the second floor, again, we're moving a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom along the Memorial Drive elevation, on the third floor, we're moving a two-bedroom to the corner unit, and on the fourth floor, where we previously had no affordable units, we have three one-bedroom affordable units.
And again, Dan, the intent of doing it this way was effectively to get approximately 20% of the units on each floor as affordable units, correct?
Correct.
So obviously, there's fewer units on the fourth floor, so we have fewer affordables there, but.
The fourth floor is more of a penthouse, right?
The fourth floor, these are regular one-level units, they do have a private roof terrace, or private terrace, and walkout terrace onto the roof level, but they're not penthouse units in that way.
And the corner will be attached as well?
They do, yeah, they're, they're no different than the market rate.
The affordable also are entitled to parking?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Whatever, whatever parking requirements apply to the market rate units, same for affordable.
So the floor plans, again, are unchanged, except for that shuffling of the location of the affordable units, the roof plan, we did add some detail just showing mechanical unit locations, it's really conceptual at this time, these are, there's a mechanical zone that we're illustrating with this gray hatched area, the diagonal hatch here, and showing approximately how many units would be needed on that upper roof area, so this is the roof above the, the fourth floor units.
Daniel, I think the comment in CCH's report also dealt with the screening of that?
Uh, yes, so I can speak to that, we have a line of sight study that we put together. So these are our building sections through the, the building, illustrating, you know, the view from the opposite side of the right-of-way, looking up at the building, the dash line indicates, anything below the dash line until it hits the building would be visible, or, sorry, anything below the dash line after the cornice line here is not visible, so, as you look across the street, up at the building, you wouldn't see this, this back level at all, or any of the units above it. So we did that for each right-of-way on Memorial Drive, Fourth Avenue, and Fifth. So this just illustrates that the units wouldn't be visible from the street. The next area that was updated on the plans were some of the elevations, specifically on the Fourth Avenue, we had some comments about adding some interest to that elevation, we also included the calculation for the solid versus void calculation, I believe the requirement is 60, so there still would be a waiver that would be needed. Along Fourth Avenue, so on this large stair tower, we're proposing an additional mural to be installed, and instead of the louvers that we had previously, we're proposing that the screening system, the graphic print on it as well, on this elevation. We've included the courtyard elevations, these weren't in the last set of plans that we presented, so these are the proposed elevations inside the courtyard, so similar materials that are on the building, we have a thin brick base and fiber cement siding above that, same type of windows. Then I'll skip down to some of the updated images here.
Did you change the materials on the west side of the building?
We did, that was another comment that we had, thank you for bringing that up, so the, the west side of the building, we had a lot of feedback that it looked kinda disconnected from what was happening on the other three sides, so we made sure we went and looked at those materials carefully, and made them match more closely with what's being presented overall, so, we feel that was an improvement. These are some additional images, so this is what's proposed for the courtyard, there was comments about, you know, what is planned for this area, and the intent is to have a paver, pedestal paver system here, made up of concrete pavers, and then an area of turf, so, we think it would be a nice area to kinda gather and have activities, this is all kinda proposed as freestanding furniture that can be moved and, you know, reconfigured as needed, a mix of planters, seating, tables.
Is the idea that this will be programmed space, or is it just?
I think it's just a lounge residence.
Use it as will, at will?
How does one access the courtyard?
It's, it's accessed from the first residential floor, there's two entrances on either end.
Just interior?
Interior, yes, so it happens from the, you know, this is kind of, the elevator lobby is right off of that, you have access in, and then there's a second means of access on the opposite side, direct to the courtyard.
There's laundry for several rooms?
Uh, there's laundry in each unit. Yes. This is an updated rendering of the Fourth Ave elevation, so we've added a large mural here, that can, will be worked out with the city, the design of that, and we've also added the flex fa, flex facade screening in these openings here, so these are openings for natural ventilation for the garage, but this gives us an opportunity to have a large printed graphic design on those openings with a flexible screen.
And that shows a building identification sign over the garage, is that, is that the intent, is to have additional signage over the garage entrance? That was one of the other questions I have.
So the signage.
Signs.
Show the signage here, just conceptually, but we have areas marked out here.
Is there allowed one residential sign?
So we have.
On Fifth, and you have that, then you have this Fourth Avenue garage sign.
Right, you.
Yeah, I think we would like to have the signage over the, the drive entry as well.
That would have to be a waiver, that we would have to agree to, one on Fifth and one on Fourth.
And then the other signage that's shown is the signage for the retail tenants, so there's one on Fifth Avenue proposed, and a second for that tenant on Memorial Drive, so they would have two signs.
And then same thing on Fourth.
And then the, the center tenant would have one sign, and then on Fourth, again, one on Memorial and one on Fourth.
Can we go back to those screens on the garage rooms on fourth? So would you make a flexible screen, they're breathable, those are open?
It's, it's like a mesh fabric that's stretched, really, tense, all stretched.
So it's breathable, so?
Yeah, so it allows for ventilation of the garage, natural ventilation of the garage.
So what happens, so now, I assume the garage is gonna be lit at night, then?
The garage is, is lit at night, it's on occupancy, a motion sensor, so it's bi-level, there'll be a low setting, and then when someone drives in, it'll go higher, so you have a minimum light level.
So the screens will light up at night?
Uh, well, there'll be some illumination from inside the garage.
A little bit, maybe? Not that much. Illumination here, didn't we discuss that last time?
We, we could.
On, on many applications, I'm not sure if we did this one yet.
We did.
And, yes, just, there's one additional view showing kinda the revised elevation on the west side of the building, and the revised Fourth Avenue, shows some planting, the fence material, I know there was comments about this section of the building, right, not being, the parking not being screened, but, even the fence and the planting material, we feel is sufficient.
The windows next to the mural, on the fourth section, that's stairs?
That's stairs, correct.
Donna, anything in your review letter that we didn't?
Yeah, did, did, was there just a mention of the?
Yeah.
The stairwells?
He talked about that last time, he said we have to need some sort of shielding or window treatment.
And lastly, there was a comment about sustainable measures and Energy Star, so this will be Energy Star for multifamily, all appliances in the units will be Energy Star certified, there'll be some increased insulation and air leakage requirements that come along with Energy Star certifying a building like this, it'll have efficient windows and glazing, high efficiency HVAC and water heating, and there will be occupancy controls on lighting areas, the common areas, so corridors, stairwells, things like that, we'll also have the dimming feature where no one is in the corridor, the light level will drop, and then if someone detects, then it comes up to a standard level.
Now it'll be in the stairwells?
Stairwells and corridors, correct, in common areas, you know, these will be all LED fixtures and water sense labeled, water efficient fixtures.
That's Fifth Avenue, that's Fourth Avenue?
Fourth.
Fourth.
This is looking toward the Memorial Ave corner.
Donna, anything in your review letter that we didn't get to, that we tried to hit? Either, either hit them with plan revisions or hit them in testimony.
Yeah, I think that's everything.
Okay. Sam, we're good with yours also?
Yes, sir.
Last time, there was a question about meters, were the meters interior, exterior, and really?
Right, there, there was a question about gas meters specifically, and there was a little confusion whether this was a gas project, there's no gas on the project, no gas meters, the intent for the electrical meters will be, there is a, the transformer is located at the southwest corner of the property, we have a smaller electrical room here where we'll have our, our main panel and meter, and then we'll have utility-grade sub-meters within the building, and we'll handle the sub-metering that way, but this will all be sorted out with the utility provider.
So your submetering will be possible?
If, if we can't fit the, all the meters that we need in the electrical room down here, or in an area where the utility provider won't access it, or read accesses, then we'll make arrangements to, to sub-meter it.
So you just have a meter you'll charge for things?
Right.
So there are no meters on the exterior?
None on the exterior, no.
Any other questions from our, our, I'm sorry, is the testimony finished?
We're, we're finished.
Okay, is there any questions from the board members?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You just talked about the electrical panel, and on the, excuse me, on the garage floor, garage level, on the south side, you have a meter electrical room, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And are 126 meters going to fit in that room?
No, so if, if they're, if we're not able to get it to work on, on this side, and we also have a room over on the other side, on Fifth Ave, but, you know, obviously, we don't wanna run all of our primaries to the other side of the building, so, we're gonna come up with a solution with the utility provider, where we can provide those sub-meter, meters within the building, or sub-meter it if we have to.
Sub-meter to each unit?
To, or include power in it.
Well, I'm looking at the, the rooms that you have indicated here as electric, and you have one on the north side, you have one on the south side. I still ask the question, even with those two electrical rooms, can you get 126 panels and meters in there?
Right, so if, if we can't fit it on the first floor, then we're gonna sub-meter, and we have room on the upper floors. And we have room on the upper floors, these storage rooms, electrical rooms, we'll find, we'll find.
They're going to, they're going to put in, put them on a different level. But they'll still stay inside the building.
Okay, another question that I have is concerning the, the master plan. And how does this development fit in with the neighboring community?
He can't answer that.
Skill and character.
He can't answer that.
I'm sorry?
He can't answer that, he's an architect. He can't answer a planning question. He's not qualified.
Any other questions from any planning board members? A, go ahead.
On the retail spaces, I just wanted to confirm that there, there's no hooded, right? So there won't be any like full-service restaurants, they're just either retail goods or?
Yeah, they're, they're not sized for a restaurant, you know, maybe a small cafe, but nothing that would need a.
That would need a hood?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't bring in the grease. There could be like a heat hood, which is just for heat, it's also if you had like, there's electric convection ovens now where they could do something quickly and they may just have to release the heat out. But the intention is not to have any grease cooking, no, no black iron hoods going through the building and no, no answer systems.
Correct, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, professionals?
I'm interested to know if there are any board members that agree with that recommendation to shift the planting zone on Memorial. I kind of, I kind of like it.
I kind of like it too.
I do too.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't move it.
Okay, you like moving it or you like not moving it?
So, so the idea, let me just lay it out. So the idea would be to leave the street trees at the curb line along with the?
Bike racks.
Bike racks and trash containers or leave the, move them to? No?
Oh, the trash is internal to the building?
No, no, the, the public ones.
Oh, they're at, oh, those are part of the, okay, I didn't see them on the streets again.
All right, and then the benches and the plantings, shrub plantings and perennials or whatever would be moved to, within like three or five feet of the front building wall. Is that what we're saying?
I'm sorry. All right, we've got it, we've got it, we've got to know, we've got to?
I said yes, I, I think it breaks at the front of the building a little better. And you won't have people who are coming out of the cars then walking across planters or down the bike lane to find the next opening.
Anybody else have any thoughts about that?
It's a good idea to get a consensus. Yeah, I'm, I'm for that, I'm for that.
So two, three, four, what, on Memorial?
On Memorial.
And leave, but let's be clear as to what we're saying on Memorial, let's be clear, okay?
All right, go ahead.
Let me just try, okay, go ahead. So the street trees would stay along the curb line, oops, sorry. And the, yeah, thank you. Oh, can you just shift it? There we go. And then the planting bed and the benches would be shifted against the building.
But not in front of the retail spaces?
Right, not in front of the retail spaces, so concentrated in those blank spots where the parking is, where the parking structure is. And we still have enough clear zone on the sidewalk. And then you'd also have enough room, again, to, if you're parked on Memorial, after you've navigated the bike lane, you can get onto the sidewalk and onto the sidewalk, you know?
Would the trees be then cut out or would it still be the grassy?
Well, the, the street trees have, have the, the grates, so they're fully.
So we wouldn't have the grassy?
Right.
Move that grassy thing back there?
Exactly, right.
Well, I, I think that further, firstly, for the reasons of when you're parking there and you're walking across, I think people are, are correct in saying that, you know, they're just going to walk over it. As opposed to finding.
Walk in the bike lane.
Right, through the bike lane and then, as opposed to finding where, where these openings are, because there are only two.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, and so, so again, these, these are right-of-way, this is the public, this is the public space. So, you know, we get that kind of who's maintaining the plantings problem from people walking on them. Can you pan a little further north? So, you know, again, part of, wow.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Very zoomed in.
Sorry, sorry.
You know, again, maybe we apply the, the daylighting design that we've been using too at the corners where we concentrate that little bit of planting more toward the corner with a little strip and then flip it against the building on the flat.
But is it, who, who maintains that? Because that turns into what?
So it's, again, it becomes easier for the property owner to maintain when it's not going to be crushed and run over by people on the street and it's right against this building. And it gives some ownership also maybe to the retail tenants, because it's right outside their, their commercial spaces, right?
We're going to give you a chance, will you give a chance?
So again, just talking, getting it out there.
I'm, I'm open either way, so I'm happy to continue that discussion. I mean, what do you, what, what, what do the board members feel?
I'm for it.
I like it the way it is.
Okay.
I, I was ambivalent, but you guys just made really good points. So I actually kind of want to hear what you guys have to say.
So, so a couple of things come to mind, then I'll ask Jim to speak as well. So I do know that inevitably they will retain water, even though they're not retention bonds. Because as, as the chairwoman said, you know, they, as heavy rains and they, eventually if it's heavy enough rains and then they'll spill over, which is what they're intended to do. They're better positioned at the street line than, it got up against the building and then spilling into the sidewalks. I also, I do want to keep our, our retail visibility. So I want to, if we do do this and push into the building, I want to make sure we keep a nice path so that the retailers have visibility and a clear, clear pedestrian path to, to the retail as well. It's just things to think about. And, and I don't know that people are going to walk across, I mean, they, they are a foot to a foot and a half deep. So you're, you're walking down to walk back up, it's, it's not the best walk. If you mean really, I'm not, I typically don't walk through them unless they're level.
I'm sorry, what, what they have to?
What's, what's, what's a foot?
Are these the buyer retentions between?
No.
No, no, no. They're not buyer retentions, okay, there's no.
On Memorial, on Memorial.
Okay, okay, okay. I thought those were retention.
No, 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 those are just regular planters.
Yeah, just flat planters.
They're not, they're really not going to hold water, they're going to work just like.
No, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought, okay. What's that?
Yeah, I'm here, it's fine. Oh, add through, whatever the board's preferences.
I mean, you have to decide whether you have that open concrete area by that corner cafe. You know, you have that open to the sidewalk, so I guess the decision has to make, do you put a plant in there too to make it more? Do you want it open to the sidewalk or do you want it? I, I guess, is that an entrance, is that the, I guess it's an entrance both ways into that retail? Fourth Avenue. Well, I guess it's the same one.
Or, and, and again, because those are the striped middle parking areas, those two on the ends, maybe they stay.
Yeah, you could basically move back from bike lane to bike rack, bike rack.
Yeah, 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 right.
Other than in front of the retail stores.
Because, and then that way your two, your two end units, you know, they have their containment and you don't have to worry about, so like for example, outdoor dining regs, right? They're allowed to go into the right-of-way a couple of feet with portable things. And then that way it doesn't interfere with that. But, you know, it gives them that framing. I think it would, I think it could work out really nice.
All right, so we have a couple of people that are in, a couple of people that like it, people don't like it, what do you?
Can I just mention a couple of things? Because pedestrian safety is sort of like important.
Yes.
If we just do planting pits, so we have a brick edge and a planting pit, that's.
Yeah, we're not talking about a raised planter, that's not allowed in the right-of-way.
So my concern is that, that people are going to be now, they have a tree grid on one side and a planting pit on the other. And you're going to be confining the pedestrians in an area that's unnatural. So they're either going to guide along the face of the building. So, well, you have, the trees, right, will be in planted pits.
Right.
Now, if we bump out and lose the pavers along the front of this area, leave the retail open, bump out, lose the pavers here and then go back in, leave the retail open, you're, you're creating areas that will have plants and kind of like a mulch area or a drop-off that you don't have a straight line to follow, you're going to be in and out. My just concern is someone's foot going off the edge of the paper. So if that's not.
I'm not concerned with that, it's a 10-foot sidewalk. You still maintain a 10-foot sidewalk that's lined up with the neighboring roadways and then you have a flat grass area. I mean, if it was a retention thing, I'd be concerned about that. But for a flat grass area, if they step off of it, they're not going anywhere really.
So just a three-foot area, basically starting at the retail to the south.
Well, whatever the width that you have, I would, I would literally take whatever you have at the front there.
That's right there.
The whole, yeah, I mean, it says what, five, four, five feet, three inches, that what it says? On the bottom?
Yeah, it looks like five foot three.
Oh, here.
Yeah, I would just, other than the tree pits themselves and maybe the corners, I would just scoot it back and obviously work around the retail spaces.
So ju- just so we're clear, would you keep this retail space open?
Sure.
Do the plantings along here, then stop at this retail?
Sure.
I know.
And then, I, I obviously keep this open, keep our corners open here.
Right, you, yeah, keep the corners the way they're, they're designed right now.
And keep that corner, well, just like it is because it's straight. Okay.
Yeah, and move that one up between those two.
And I would say it's up to you guys, if you want like low plantings, like a foot tall in front of the glass of the retail space, it might look nice, you might not want it. It could be fine either way.
True. I don't think either makes or breaks it for me, but I, I think I like it back against the building more, in my opinion.
All right, so what do we, what do we think?
Yeah, this way we can be the applicants.
Just to give, all right, just to give some idea if we were, if we were going to go on this.
Three, four?
So what do, what do you guys think, Dan?
Okay, raise hands if that was four.
That they're in? You like it?
I mean, I'm okay. Either way.
Oh, I, I prefer it that way, but it's not, not a make or break.
Okay, thank you. I can go either way on that, so.
It's four on four.
You got five.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, you got it.
All right. Okay, anything else? All right, now we have created a mess.
Yep.
We've created a mess, can I just say that? Because now we, we have three witnesses that we have to be able to question. I think that, I think that Jack can handle it.
I can.
But here you go. All right, does anyone have anything else to say as planning board members or professionals? Okay, let's open it to the public.
Eric, do you have any more questions on, based on the testimony that the three gentlemen just gave?
Of all three people? No, okay.
And the gentleman next to you, do you have any?
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so. Okay, let's open, let's, can I get a motion for a public, open to public comment? For a three-minute comment?
Second.
Okay, three-minute comment.
Eric, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about the purpose of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth. Do you state your name for the record and your address?
Eric Galapo, 908 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
So thank you, planning board members, for your time and attention to this matter. As you know, this has taken nearly five years to get to this point. And I do urge you to vote in favor of this application if for no other reason for us to just get on with our lives. This process is deeply unfortunate. How we have arrived here is not great. The constant use of redevelopment powers in advance of the planning board having any real input into the creation of the plan to the exclusion of the public is deeply concerning. What you should be asking for in the future is true zoning reform that provides a clear framework for Memorial Drive where developers, well-intentioned as they are, as easy to work with as they are as Mr. Milstein and his company have been. We need a plan for Memorial Drive that creates a predictable framework for development. In this process, we have been subjected to, by one council member being told, it's my job to take one for the team, by another to be called an a-hole, by another to be called that the Fourth and Fifth Avenue people are members of a cult simply for the fact that we wanted information. We wanted to be included in the process and we were not. We had to beg, borrow and steal to get the outcome that we have, which was asking for basic things like having the building aligned to the prevailing setbacks, which is a feature of the city plan of this town. The fact that we had to ask for things to be basic urban design criteria to be established and met is really not fair. This is a problem of the process. The first time anybody was formally required to be notified for a hearing in this five years happened less than two months ago when this board provided us notice. We received it in the mail one day before the hearing on a holiday when City Hall was closed, meaning there was functionally no opportunity for anybody to review those plans. Thankfully, they're available online and I follow agendas and so, yeah, it was easy to find for me. But the involvement of the community is paramount. We can do better. And allowing the city to continually use the redevelopment powers in advance of this board having the real say is the travesty. Thank you for your attention, I urge you to approve this application in its current form.
Motion to, to close public comment?
Seven. All in favor?
All right, there are a few things that I have on, on my list and I'm not sure if, I, I believe that we agreed to this, but let's talk about it. We had talked about auditory and visual driveway signals. We got that. There was also a request from the public about the texture across the driveway. There was a, there was a, an area that we wanted to, so that a person that was coming out knew. So I'm going to request that that be included there as well. I believe that all the shielding that we were talking about and the stairwells and whatnot are already in the report, so that has, it doesn't have to be something separate. And now the movement of the planters on Memorial, I think, has to be put in because that was not something that we had agreed upon. I'm not sure, how do we deal with the fact that, all right, you, you guys are going to work on the lighting? So the only statement we really have to make is that there is no waiver requested and maybe that's what we have to put in there, Jack, is that there is no waiver requested for lighting.
Well, because we said, we said there's going to be no light spillage at the property lot, but we'll allow lower light intensity on.
Minimum average.
On the parking lot, subject to.
I think you got a basic question before we even get to all of this.
Go ahead.
It's up to the board, I know at the applicants, they want you to give them approval subject to. But are these, the lighting plan revision and the landscape plan revision, are these things that you're willing to accept as conditions of approval? Or do you want to see them first? It's your call, not my call, it's your call.
I would say as long as Sam and Donna.
Are, are involved in that?
Because the things we want are very specific.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
I agree.
So we just have to make sure that the conditions are outlined correctly when it comes to both.
That's fair.
Okay, the other ones I know.
That's fair. Are there others that you have or does anybody else have?
Yeah, what was about issuing, the issues of aligning the sidewalks on Fourth and Fifth Avenue?
Nobody took up on it, but, yeah.
Is it a concern for you?
Yeah, I mean, it interests me.
Community said about it, it seemed, it seemed like that would be reasonable to have aligned sidewalks. Reasonable to have a line side, especially if we're talking about keeping, you know, I don't know if it was, it was done, the explanation was that it was jogged that way to, uh, to keep an existing tree, which here is diseased, but then I heard that on the plan, it was a new tree, so, and I didn't, we didn't go in further whether it's an impracticality, you know, why that jog is there.
We can craft a condition.
So we don't have to...
So we don't have to open public comments again?
Well, let me see if I can answer it. So with respect to that, we have to do the jog at some point in that sidewalk, because if we align the sidewalks directly, there's not going to be enough room for the street trees along that street. So we, we have to, at, at some point, we have to jog the sidewalks, we have enough room for the trees.
Then you have to do it on both avenues.
Yeah, it's on both avenues.
It's jogging on both avenues.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it happens on both.
See, see what I mean? If you, if you bring that sidewalk straight down, there's not going to be sufficient room for those street trees. I mean...
Well, I can't see the jog, so I can't see the sidewalk coming.
Is that, you're saying that's where the sidewalk is now, today, like? Because if the trees are existing...
You can see it here.
Why is it set back so far? No, no, why is the sidewalk set back so far from the curb line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, how long is that, so what is the distance you have for that?
No, but at the other end, like, why is the sidewalk back so far?
But I guess this is the, this is the sidewalk here, I was saying.
So are, are we asking for the jog not to exist? And what the impact of that is? Is that the question? I think, I think we already know that.
Well, here, I guess the question is, if you kept the alignment of the sidewalk, how long would the planting have to the tree be? And is it sufficient? So could somebody say what the...
From, from our perspective, it doesn't matter. We'll, we'll do it either way. We, we don't care. The only reason for doing that was to have enough room to have street trees planted there without them dying.
I think you're saying there's not enough room, so I'm asking, what is the space that you're allowing now, and if you didn't allow that, you line the sidewalk, what would the space be?
Well, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to recall Mr. Kennedy and have him answer that question. So let's do it, Jim.
So, thank you. So, so the existing median between the curb and the sidewalk is sufficient for certain street trees. We know that the sidewalk gets lifted by the tree roots, depending on what gets planted. We'll have to reevaluate, if you tell us to keep the sidewalk the way it is and line it up straight down, then we're going to have to reassess what trees we plant there. We might not be able to plant the trees that are proposed, we might just have to be using a smaller, you know, a different root system, a different top, we might have to do a root barrier, might just have to do something different. If it's not important, we'll make it work.
I'm only one voice, I'm only, I can't, I can't open it up.
Anybody else concerned about that?
I don't have a preference for a straight versus a jogged sidewalk, because it's ADA compliant, and it could be navigated.
Yeah, I, I want the trees to be healthy.
Yeah, we want healthy trees, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah, but are planting standards take that into account?
Then...
The, that's why we have, if it's in a paved area, you use a certain type of, you know, root zone and planting mix and...
So it sounds like that's a no-brainer then?
Yeah.
To, to just say, you know, if you want the street, if you want the sidewalks to be straight, there shouldn't be a reason that's stopping that.
Not for new trees.
Not for, because these are all new trees, right?
Right.
If they're all new trees, then what are we stopping? You know, why, why is this an issue if it's...
Right, and so again, my... So I'm, my concern, because I'm, I don't know why it's hitting me now, but I don't know why the sidewalk is so far away from the curb.
Well, that's why we're looking to, to move it, to make it straight. Right?
Between the driveway and where it's jogging, on Fourth Avenue.
Right, on Fourth Ave, it's the same thing on both.
No, we're on Fourth, but we're looking at Fourth Avenue right now.
Right.
So we're, there's the driveway. So between the driveway and the Westerly property line, the sidewalk is very close to the property line, not the curb line, and then it's jogging back toward the curb line to meet the existing sidewalk.
Yes.
So why isn't it at, why is it so close to the building, so to speak?
Well, that's, that's why we're okay with, we can be okay to move it.
There is no reason on Fourth Avenue for the sidewalk to be over there.
Well, neither is, it's not on, on the Fifth either. There's no reason.
Now, on Fifth Avenue, I, I understood the testimony to be, we were trying to save or be careful of existing trees, and the testimony was, no, there's, they're in crappy shape, and, no, wait, no, those are actually new trees.
As long as those are new trees, I'm not saying that there's a reason why we have to jog anything.
And again, so where is that, are you jogging from the inside to the outside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, I don't understand why is the sidewalk so far away from the curb line?
I mean, that's on, the same thing on Fifth Avenue.
Because it's...
Because if you drew a straight line from the sidewalk further west, it goes right into the crosswalk.
Yeah.
At the point, and like you said.
It should do that.
The other than the sidewalk.
Too far to the...
It should just be a straight line.
Yeah.
All right, so if we're doing all new trees anyway?
There we go.
Why can't we have a straight sidewalk?
Well, it's hard not to do all the trees.
Because...
That's where the sidewalk should be.
The more you complicate this, the more I'm going to tell you, you should not be giving approvals, because that's how we wound up with Johnny Macs across the street with Oliver Faschino. Okay? You gotta be careful, because how much are you going to leave to the discretion of Donna and Sam and the applicant? And you're not going to see it, you're not going to approve it. So if they approve something, you have to be ready to accept it. It's fine with me.
That aside, I'm gonna...
If that's what you want, I'll line it up that way.
I, I'm gonna take a, I'm, I'm pretty ambivalent on this, I'd quite honestly, I'd vote for it either way. Right now, the sidewalk does jog, the misalignment irks me a little bit, but it does make this really nice thing where you're walking between two rows of trees. Right, directly in the middle of two rows of trees.
On the fourth side?
Yeah.
On both sides.
And, and...
Well, you would still...
You would still be going through it.
It's just that...
Well, well...
You're planting different trees, that's why.
No, and again, our planting standards, and those are small trees, they're not large shade trees like they are on Fifth Avenue, so the planting standard is, you would still be able to have the proper root zone for having a sidewalk within however many feet of the trunk. You would have a sidewalk and, and that planting zone. And the same alignment, the full length of Fourth Avenue, instead of having it, that weird jog at the end. And having it line up with the crosswalk at the corner.
I know that, that the mayor had a question about, about why are we doing new trees?
No, I said...
Oh, do they have to be?
No, I thought before the testimony was, they're not new trees, they're, trees are already there.
So on Fifth Avenue?
Correct.
No, they're all, they're all new. All new trees. So again, with respect to the sidewalk...
So the ones on Fifth, they're there, you're chopping down?
New trees.
Okay.
They're all new trees. I mean, we need to construct the project, so by the time we're done, they're all new trees. So again, all new trees, if you want the sidewalks to be a straight line, easy enough, we'll do it.
Do we want to see it? It's up to you. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do this, I'm just saying, it's up to you to decide how you want it to be.
Do we feel comfortable with allowing this to happen outside of our approval?
If it's all, it's pretty, if it's all straight, and if we're all agreeing to it, I don't have to see it again.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. Again, I think the things we're asking for are very specific.
Okay, I get it, I can, I can...
We're good with, we're good with that.
Does anybody have any other comments that they would like to make?
Eric, do you want to ask any more posters, basically, test the show? Okay.
Any other comments that any planning board members would like to make before we move forward here? Anything from our, our, um...
Are we still talking about conditions we wanted to add?
Yes.
Okay, so what I added from last time was we need DCA approval for affordable housing. Someone said that last time? I don't look confused. Need approval from DCA regarding affordable housing, something got written down, they're looking at me like I'm crazy, so that's, I'll delete it.
So we'll delete that.
The other one I had was about parking, and if a park, one parking stall has to be available for each rented unit.
We, we took care of that.
Yeah. They already testified to that.
I've got a list.
That's it? Go ahead.
All right, obviously, I'll get to the big two or three at the end, okay? Parking system, audio, and visual, we discussed that condition. The drainage maintenance manual to be submitted and recorded, okay? That's in Sam's report. We have standard clauses that will be put in any redevelopment plan resolution, which will be in there. If there are any outstanding issues contained in either the CCH or vacuum imports, they will comply with it. The proposed fence will match the Galipo fence, we'll call it the Galipo fence, okay? That was, that was agreed to by the engineer on the record. Trash and recycling will be by private haulers. Representations are already made on the record as to how long, and the compacting and how the system will work, so that there isn't an accumulation of trash that's there. The courtyard was addressed. Murals, you have to stand a clause for meeting the city mural committee, whatever that language is.
Public science.
Yeah, whatever it is, we'll do it. Signage, I'm going to talk to Donna about how to craft that condition on signage, she's going to help me with that. Parking is to be included with each unit, parentheses, not rented separately, so that applies with the ordinance. Plan revision, one of the side, the sidewalk across the driveway will be delineated, so we know that. Now, the big, the big ones are the lighting plan submission, I'll get that language from Donna as to what the applicant is going to comply with, that they represented on the record. It's going to be either point one at the property line or something or other, it's a rather complicated one, but I'll talk to her about that. And the memorial, memorial streetscape will be revised, basically to move the plantings back to the building, open spaces by the commercials, by the commercial units.
And the trees stay where they are.
Trees will stay where they are. Of course, it'll be much more lengthy than that after I talk to Donna, and we're going to also have the plans revised to show the Fourth and Fifth Avenue sidewalks to be aligned in a straight line, okay? And whatever the appropriate plantings are for that area pursuant to the ordinance, they'll be followed and submitted to Donna and/or Sam for approval, and that'll be that.
So we need to include in the lighting one, there's currently not asking for an exception for the total lighting level of that parking lot.
Right.
But there are amendments may create a new exception.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get on, I'm gonna have to go, I'm gonna need specifics.
I think we have to say that we're okay with that, as long as you guys agree.
Just like you're granting relief for the additional signage.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I have that, that signage issue. And that's basically what we have, and all of the, any amendments or revised plans, the lighting plans, memorial streetscape, sidewalk alignment.
Meters inside the building.